The time is 6:31. Apologize for the delay. We'll call the meeting to order and have roll call, please.
Dyke.
Present.
Walker.
Here.
Frisbee.
Here.
May Cumber.
Here.
Wintering.
Here.
All present and accounted for. Agenda item one is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes, Dr. Cox?
Yeah. I asked that item number seven be tabled for a later date.
For a later date.
And that item number 15E, we're going to add one graduate to the Kerry Lane.
Is your... Just a little closer to you.
We're going to add one graduate to the Kerry Lane.
Exhibit.
Yeah.
And board members have received that, correct?
Yeah, I handed out the revised exhibit. You want a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to move the agenda as corrected.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as corrected. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item two is to welcome the visitors and allow for public comment. So as we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak as well as allowing the board to complete the full agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we, as a board, cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa's Sunshine Law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you, as an individual, may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. Thank you for your support of our school district. So are there any comments tonight about items that are not on this evening's agenda?
Larry Wolf up at the high school. I just want to share something with you and just more of a thank you to the community and folks at the school. Prom was a huge success this year. If you were there for the grand march or whatever you want to call that, it was a lot of fun. Got a packed house, almost 800 people there. The prom dance was held at the KC Hall because the armory was doing drill that weekend. So their schedule precedes ours every day. So we... KC was a great experience. It was a great night. There was a lot of people working. A shout out to Marla Reima and the junior class. Wonderful job. So and a thank you to the community for all their support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other comments by the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item three, comments by board members and the superintendent. It's been three weeks since we were at the table and a lot has happened.
A lot has happened. So Charles City students and the district continue to have a consistent presence on KIMT-TV out of Mason City. In the last two weeks, our students have been featured on stories about body image and raising money for Jump Rope for Heart. Mr. Johnson and I had a conference call with the director of the Northland CAPS program in suburban Kansas City. And CAPS, as you remember, is the Center for Advanced Professional Studies, and it's that career academy concept that we've been exploring. They have seven school districts down there in suburban Kansas City that collaborate to provide this opportunity. And in Springfield, Missouri, there are 11 districts that are ready to kick off in the fall on a similar program. Mr. Johnson and I are going to speak with the director of the Southeast Iowa STEM Hub on Wednesday to look at an Iowa version of the same type of thing as we continue to explore this opportunity for our high school students. The 82nd advocacy video that Justin DeVore put together on funding for our schools has been viewed more than 8,500 times at our district Facebook page. It's reached like 22,000 people, but 8,500 have seen it, and more than 1,100 people have watched it at our YouTube site. So we're pretty proud of that. The Associated Press picked up the story, and it appeared in major Iowa newspapers from Dubuque to Sioux City, from the Quad Cities to Council Bluffs. It also appeared in the Miami Herald, the Houston Chronicle, the Seattle Post, Intelligencer, and the Washington Times, among others. Those were the ones that I happened to find. Continued advocacy is still needed to get the Iowa legislature to find common ground and set state supplemental aid for fiscal years 16 and 17. Late this afternoon, we confirmed that I'll be going down to Waterloo on Thursday and taping part of a program for the Steele Report, which will air on Sunday again about funding our schools. So encourage folks at home to contact legislators, email, telephone, social media. Let them know that we need increased funding for our school systems across the state. The Iowa School Public Relations Association held their annual award ceremony last Friday, and the Charles City Community School District took home four awards, including the Award of Merit in the photography category, and that was for snapshots of student learning. We took home the Award of Excellence in podcasting slash audio category, and that was for the 60-second snapshot, the one-minute podcast that I do each week that airs on KCHA every Wednesday. We won the Award of Excellence in the special purpose publication category for the Phase One Introduction tab for the Charles City Middle School that we produced last fall, and the highest award that you can win, the Blue and Gold Award, the school district won in the Excellence in Writing category for the "Sky's the Limit" story about our talented and gifted program. So I want to thank Justin for all his hard work to get as many avenues as we can to reach our stakeholders with the good news that we have going on here in the school system. And then I'll finish with one last thing. The officials at the American Association of School Administrators joined forces with the Supes Academy to create a National Superintendent Certification Program. It's a two-year program that launched in the summer of 2013, and it focuses on sharpening skills that successful superintendents acknowledge are needed to thrive on the job. Last week, I learned that I'd been accepted into the West Coast cohort that will start in July.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
There's a short snapshot of what's going on across the district.
Wow. Very good. All great things.
Yes.
Board members have any comments to make?
I do. Is this on? Can you guys hear this? Okay. I just wanted to report on our food service progress. If you recall, we put together a team of people, staff, Robin, myself, Dr. Cox, and we have been on a quest to try and determine what the next venue for progress in that area within our schools, and that is, we went on a tour of, let's see, Albert Lee and visited the Chartwells program. We went to Casson, Minnesota, and visited the Tahoe program. There are other food service programs out there, but they are not in close proximity to us. We'd have to go to, you know, Sioux Falls or Western Iowa to see some of those programs. We also visited Decorah to see their independent program that they do with a lot of farm-to-school components. And we've discussed a few times about, you know, what next steps might be. Fortunately for us, because the state has had a big hiccup on funding and deciding the future of our funding for the coming year, they've delayed the RFP deadline for food service contracts to the end of this month. So that works in our favor because we are done studying this program, and we've decided to move forward with an RFP to improve that program and have a number of goals such as increase the number of fresh fruits and vegetables, fresh cooking, a variety of entree options for our secondary students, increase participation, our lunch numbers in the program. So, you know, we'll continue working towards that and see where this leads us next.
Thank you. Exciting times. Anyone else?
Yeah, on March 31st, I invited Dr. Cox to go with me to meet with Congressman King at the Kiwanis meeting, and I kind of caught a lot of guff that how him and I could tie up the whole half hour pre-his presentation with school items, but we had his sole attention. He sat at the table with Dr. Cox and I, but I'm sorry you didn't get your picture in the papers instead of mine.
No. Quite all right.
But anyway, we... The kind of typical politician, I gather, just he didn't want to commit to anything. And we were trying to get at him about state aid and some of this stuff, and wondered why we couldn't get commitment out of him, and he just kind of he-hawed around about that. And when it come time to get for him to give his program, it was all about four and eight and everything else. He didn't want to talk about the school systems. But we needed to get in some questions, and I was pretty sure that Dr. Cox was able to attend that meeting.
Very good.
Very nice.
Anything from over here?
Just drive for your school on Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
Most Ed Motors, nine to one, I believe, so test drive vehicle. Think myself will be riding with some folks. I'm not sure if anybody else got roped into it, but possibly the scariest thing I've ever done last year.
Did that a couple times last year.
We've done it before. It's fun.
You just need to wait until your children need to start driving and you know what the scariest thing is.
Everybody stop out. Great fundraiser.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to agenda item four, which is the 2015-16 Certified Budget Public Hearing. This is the time when anyone may speak to the board in support of or against any portion of the 2015-16 Certified Budget. And we'll just verify with Terry O'Brien that we did get this published correctly in the newspaper and on time.
Yes.
And have you received any written comments?
No written notices.
No written notices. So are there any public comments that anyone would like to make about the certified budget? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and move on to agenda item five, which is the 2014-15 Certified Budget Amendment Public Hearing. Again, this is the time when anyone may speak to the board in support of or against any portion of the 2014-15 Certified Budget Amendment. And we'll double check. We did get this published in accordance with state law as well?
Yes.
Have you received any written comments?
No written comments.
Are there any public comments about the certified budget amendment for the current fiscal year? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on the certified budget amendment and move on to agenda item six, which is the middle school addition construction documents. Jean Underwood and her team are here with us again this evening.
Oh, sorry about that.
You're fine.
So I was going to start off with just doing a quick review of the plans. So as Danielle is pulling those up, if you want to flip through your hard copy with me. Essentially, the biggest changes have been to the gymnasium and locker room areas. On the first... The first plan that you look at is the overall first floor plan. Next page is the overall second floor plan.
Have there been any major changes in the three weeks?
Besides making the gym bigger and the locker rooms bigger.
Well, we voted on doing that last time, but yeah.
Yeah, so that's what we focused on primarily, as well as developing the construction documents over the rest of the building. I did not bring a copy of construction documents with me today. We're going to be printing those on Friday, and then we'll send a set up here. And so it's a fairly thick set. We do these presentation versions just so you don't have to look at all of the extra lines and try to interpret it.
Okay.
So if you want to flip to the third page, you can see this is the enlarged view of the south wing. So this is the gymnasium as well as the commons area. So on this plan, you'll see that we have made the gymnasium wider, shifted a few things around. We've got the locker rooms, additional showers and toilet fixtures in the locker room area, modified the coach's office and toilet room. But really, I've got some sheets later on that show that in a little more detail. The next page, the fourth page, is in the enlarged plan of the learning studio area. So this is the first floor. You can also see the resource leases for FCS, music, industrial tech, and art on this page a little bit better. But for the most part, these areas really haven't changed a lot. It's just been a matter of fleshing out some of the details. Once we get to sheet 13, we skipped a few numbers. You can see a revised plan of the locker rooms with the revised locker counts and some elevations that show what types of lockers we have in those spaces. So in each of the boys' and girls' locker rooms, let's see, we have... Danielle, do you know what the 210 is for? That's for each one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So 70 of the 18 inch wide by 24 inch deep by 36 inch high, the large lockers, plus an additional 140 of the smaller lockers. Those are the 12 inch high that are above. And you can see that they alternate a large one on the bottom, two small ones on the top, and then the next one is too small on the bottom, one large on the top. If you look at the center of the top page here, you can see the PE lockers. You can see we have two large lockers and then a bank of five smaller ones. So students could have an individual small locker, but when they come into gym class, you know, they can use a large locker to put most of their belongings, those kinds of things. Or some students may need a larger locker, but you have that option in there. And then if you have other grade levels or other schools come in, they have locker space available as well potentially. But like I mentioned before, the athletic locker rooms are here on the left, one for boys, one for girls. They're the same. We do have the option on this long, straight bank. If we wanted to do a different combination of lockers, we could make those just double-tier instead of the one large too small. We could do two large. We have some options and some flexibility there. We're just looking... We would be looking for feedback from the athletic folks on whether or not that was a preferred decision. So that is an option that you have. You can see we were able to fit in eight showers, three toilet... Well, five toilet fixtures, sorry. And then the PE section of the locker room, coach's office with a shower and toilet room, a small janitor's closet, and then access back out into the gym. Down at the end of the locker rooms, you can see these little storage closets. Our plumbing engineer asked me if we might be able to use those to have water heaters to serve just those locker room areas to help save on the cost of piping coming from the far north side of the building. And I said, absolutely, let's make that happen. So we're losing a tiny storage room, but we're gaining a lot with convenience for getting those water heaters closer. All right, if you want to go to the next. Are there any questions on that before we move on? The next page shows an enlargement of the music resource base, the FCS and industrial tech resource base, and then the art resource base. We're starting to put in all of the storage units and furniture pieces that might go into those spaces. Danielle, did you have any discussion items for this or just more of an update?
No.
Okay. You can see on the music area, we've started to lay out brass instruments, woodwind instruments, string instruments. We're looking at getting guitars, keyboards, all of those different things that the music department currently has and working through those details now. The other thing to point out is that we have two offices for music. That way, each of the instructors has the ability to do private lessons within their office space without disturbing the other teachers. On the next sheet, sheet 15, you can see an enlarged view of the gymnasium. So in this view, the gymnasium is showing the main court and then all of the bleachers that would fit into the gym. So you can see this area on the top of the page is darker. That is the set of bleachers that we would include in the base bid of the project. Everything else on top of the mezzanine and the floor bleachers on the east side here would be part of the alternate bid. So we're looking at having 572 seats for the base bid and then an additional, oh, about 1,200 as part of the alternate bid for a total seat count somewhere around 1,892 plus or minus, depending on the bleacher manufacturer and the exact layout. That includes all your accessible seating requirements, the aisle space that's required, those kinds of things. I know in the previous version, we showed base bid bleachers on the opposite side as well in the center, but with the additional size of the gym, we felt like this was a better solution and it's going to be more economical in the long run to not have sections of bleachers and to do the whole section at one time. As far as your court clearances, we have about eight feet on your side courts and then 18 feet on your end courts, which leaves plenty of room for people to pass by during a game, but still have plenty of space around the court. You still also have plenty of space to set up a scorer's table, team seating, those kinds of things on the sidelines as well, and people can still walk behind them. On the next page, you can see the gym set up for practices or for a tournament where we are using the cross courts. So you can see we have two full-size cross courts. We're showing about seven feet on the sidelines and then seven feet in the center. I believe we were talking about having a divider curtain between those as well, just not showing up on this plan. You are able to get three rows open of bleachers and still have about four feet from the step to the side court line. With your three rows open, that's about 150 seats, so that gives you an idea of what the capabilities or capacity would be for that. Any questions?
Comment. Thank you for moving that exterior door.
Yes.
From the far top right to the lower right.
Oh, do we have... Oh, yes.
There used to be an exterior door.
Yes, right here.
Right outside the main doors.
There, and now it's on the bottom of your drawing.
Yeah, you know what?
Thank you for doing that.
It just makes so much more sense. It actually goes out into... I think it goes out into the vestibule now. Actually, I'm not sure that's showing up.
Yeah.
On the main plan, it should show it.
Oh, was it?
I'm not sure.
That goes into the vestibule for the emergency exit.
We still have an emergency exit, but it doesn't go directly outside. It goes into the vestibule. That way, if you want to control.
Sure.
People coming in and out, and it's not as confusing as to where do I go in.
My only comment here was the bleacher seating with... If you went to two on one side and three on the other side, you gain a foot on each end line.
Mm-hmm.
Safety-wise, but you lose a little bit of seating, obviously, but I don't know if priority with an extra foot of safety versus...
You don't have to pull out three bleachers.
Yeah.
You could pull out one row, two rows.
Yeah.
It gives you the flexibility to do that.
Okay.
Absolutely. Or if you didn't want any on one end, just a couple of rows on the other end, you could do that as well.
Depends upon what's happening and how many people might be there.
Right. Any other questions or comments on the gym? Okay, let's go to the next page. I included this. Dr. Cox and I had talked about the FCS program.
Right.
And in our discussion, one area that came up as a potential location for that program is the second floor Explore Lab. So this is in... You know what? Danielle, could you go back to one of the overall plans of the learning studio just so I could point out where this is located? Go forward one. Okay. So this is located on the second floor in this corner of the building. So this is north going this direction. All right, now we could go back to sheet 16. We had... On the first floor, the space below the square room in the corner is mechanical electrical space. On the second floor, and that has access from the outside. On the second floor, we did have an access point through this toilet room, which was just kind of a placeholder. We knew we needed a door, but we weren't sure what we were going to do with that. So when Dr. Cox and I were talking about the FCS program, I said, well, we have this large storage room available. We're going to provide access off of this Explore Lab. That might make sense as a location for that program because we do have this space available. So we haven't had any further discussions about that, but I wanted to point that out to you tonight as a change in the plan, that this storage room is now accessible off of this Explore Lab. Let's go one more. Yep, no, that's correct. All right, so the next item I have on my agenda, I apologize, I've got a big paper here, was to talk about... Oh, can we go back to an overall first floor plan? One item that we've also been talking about... Keep going. Oh, go back. Go forward. Nope, one more. One thing that we've been talking about recently is the existing storage building that's on site, and I think there was some miscommunication on whether or not that was staying or going. We finally figured out the disconnect, but I did want to point out, I believe that is going to be dismantled or moved, removed this year sometime. But I did want to point out the current location. This is that building, and this is how close it's located to where the new building is going to be going. It's about 20 feet away. So I wanted you to be able to see that's the location of that building with respect to the new building.
But you said we are moving that out then this summer?
Yeah, it's too close.
Yeah, too close for...
It's very...
Well, we're working on the timeline.
Right.
Could it be October instead of July?
Exactly.
Sometime this year, probably.
But I think we're in agreement that it needs to be... Something needs to be done before school opens. With this proximity and location, it's going to be a lot easier for construction if that is moved, whether or not the timing is, you know, before construction starts, during, or a little bit into it for the fall.
Okay.
All right. The next section is going to be on the packet of materials that Estes provided, and there's four or five different things in here we want to cover. Scott, you want to just give a quick overview and then I can hit some of the highlights as well?
Here, I got two. I don't mean to. Oh, you've got one there. Yeah, there's...
So I'm going to go through this kind of quickly. You've all seen versions of this before. The main point is each time we leave you, we go back, and Jean works hard on incorporating the things you've asked to incorporate. We work hard on determining what those costs are. If there's ups and downs, which is really part of the normal process, events and flows in cost, this document changes a little over the course of time, but the goal is for her to get you as many things as she can, and that you want in the project for us to help manage the... Help her manage the cost so that the budget stays where you originally hoped it would be. So the first page is similar to what you've seen before. The 18.5 at the top is the number we talked about at the last meeting. The list of changes under that, without going through the whole list, the biggest one there was the addition of the size of the gym. And the others are... And the, the others are sort of a list of things that have either come, come in or gone out, savings ideas and things like that. The net result, the net result is on the bottom and don't, and don't hold your breath on the bottom there. The nineteen million indicates that, that the net changes that we all knew about at the last meeting leave us at about nineteen million dollars. The second page, you'll see the same numbers at the top, but then, and it shows that there's a variance of two hundred thousand dollars. But then the, the list on the second page is a list of things that we either have worked on and are good with or are working on with Jean to, to manage that number back to the, back to the eighteen-eight that's the target. The third page is, is dedicated to smart choice options. They're, one of the things the board asked us to be considered was the toilet rooms and an effort to make them, without calling them, without, without using terminology, to make them more safe than just a locker room. And so the first line item there is the cost that would be involved in, to some degree, hardening those areas structurally, just increasing the strength of all the masonry, reinforcing it, grouting it, making those rooms, making those rooms tougher. And the second line item is for the specialty doors and hardware that go really the next step. And I'll let Jean talk about that more. Items that we have removed from consideration are, real quickly, masonry walls in the learning wing. That seemed like a, a lot of money for the, the difference in some of the areas. The landscaping allowance, Dr. Cox indicated that, that that would be landscaping, it'd be done either later or by others. The exterior monument sign, the same thing. And the vegetated roof, Jean's going to visit about, do a little more about that if you have questions on that as well. So last page, a short update on the First Avenue extension. Dr. Cox expressed concern last time about the, about the delta between three hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars. And understandably so. We've been working on that. The, the short, the short dialogue about what's been going on is the city originally budgeted based off very preliminary information as well. They didn't have a, they didn't have a fully set of design set of documents at that time, back in January. And Estes didn't have a fully designed set of documents. We just had a shaded area. So currently, this week, we will have the city better information from the designers and we will have better information from the designers. Both sides are going to work on those numbers. And that, that range should narrow and with the, with the goal being that the city's budget will be very close to the budget that we think is going to happen so that when the thing goes on for bids, there aren't, there aren't big surprises. Final energy rebate, I think everybody knows the status on. And so really, the rest of the update from our end is Jean's team is steaming along with more details all the time and here toward the end of the week, we'll be, we're going to really work hard to zero something in for you. Any questions?
No, very good.
Thank you.
So what is it you need from us this evening? Anything specifically?
Yes. And I'm not done yet.
Okay.
I'm not done yet.
Sorry.
Let me finish getting through it and then we'll talk about specifics, things that need action on. Okay. So going back, let's go back to the beginning of Estes's sheets here and we can just discuss a few of them. Go forward one more, Danielle, please. As Scott mentioned, the variance right now, basically what we're, past our budget is about two hundred thousand dollars. We've been putting our heads together with Estes and internally trying to come up with ways to bridge that gap, keeping in mind that we still have a little bit of design contingency, which we'd love to roll over into bid contingency if we can, and some other ideas back at the studio. But things we'd like to get in front of you, just to know what some of these larger dollar items, the possibilities of doing, I would like to go through these briefly. If there's anything that you feel like tonight you would like to take action on, we'd be happy for you to do that. If there's things that you would like to keep considering, that's fine. We're not asking you to come up with the two hundred thousand dollars to cover that variance tonight because we still have some other ideas on ways to save some of that money. But if there's anything on that list that seems quite palatable and makes sense to you, we certainly like to discuss that and, and take action on it if you're comfortable with that. So looking at those ideas, the first one and probably the largest one would be to remove the clear story at the learning studios. Personally, I don't like that idea from a design standpoint, from an educational standpoint, but we feel like it's something that you should know that is, that is an option that you have.
So explain that a little more. I'm not clear as to what you're saying, sorry.
So in the learning studios, on the second floor, the roof pops up in the center and we have a band of windows that goes all the way around to bring natural light into the gather.
Okay.
Gather spaces. So if we were to lower that roof, so it was just one big flat roof, there would be no clear story windows coming into that space.
I don't like that idea.
No, it's a little bit like what they did up at the high school, the circles, put the new roof on and close all the windows up.
Yeah, I don't like that idea. Sorry.
That's fine. I don't like that idea either. The second idea would be to remove some of the windows that are at the learning studios, that main corridor where the cafes are. Danielle, would you mind going back to the second story plan or the second floor plan of the learning studios? There you go. Oh, there you go. So there are windows right here at this location and there's windows right here at this location on both the first and second floors. If we were to eliminate those windows, this, the cost savings is listed for you. I don't really like that idea either. I don't like any of these ideas a whole lot.
And you've already really limited the number of windows there from what it was six or eight months ago.
Correct. Right. The next, the next item I think is something that you should seriously consider. On the exterior of the building, I don't have the exterior images with me. Around the, around the building, there's a variety of colors and textures. For some of those, we're using metal panels that are kind of a horizontal ribbing. We could change those metal panels into fiber cement siding, which is what the rest of the building is. We can still have the same color. We could use patterns in the fiber cement to make it have the same feel. It just wouldn't have the depth that a metal panel would have. And so the savings associated with that are pretty significant. It may be something worth considering. It doesn't directly affect your learning environments. So I think that's something that should be on the table to consider. The next item, number four, removing the windows at the east elevation of the gym. Could you go back one slide, Danielle? There we go. So in the gymnasium, we have windows on this side. This is the east side, the south side, and the west side. These are up fairly high above the mezzanine and they let natural daylight into the space. In looking at future phasing of the building, the windows on the west side and the south side would remain open. There's potential that the phase two addition would block off the windows on the east side, depending on the volume of those spaces. So I wanted to bring that forward as an option. If you were to eliminate those windows now, that might make sense. Now, keeping in mind also that we have an alternate bid to provide skylights in the gymnasium, to provide daylight as well. So it's a bit of a, it could be a bit of a trade-off. So I wanted to present that to you as well as a potential option. The last item we have on the cost reduction list tonight would be to remove the balcony at the exterior second level at the information commons, which I don't like that idea either.
No.
No.
So today, at our food service meeting, we talked about potentially not finishing off the second floor.
Correct.
Would that be another cost savings item that's not listed here?
That's not listed here. So Danielle, if you could go to the learning studio on the second floor. So we met and talked about food service, about what the goals are for each of the serving areas, how that might function as a cohesive plan, what makes sense for serving students. Does it make sense to have three serving areas open during lunchtime? Does it make more sense to have two? If we're just going to do two, does it make sense to have the second floor operational? So the thought, the thought is that the second floor food service serving area would just be left open to be used as collaboration space, seating space, lounge space, something like that. When phase two is built, we could convert that back to a serving area for when we add the high school students back into the mix. That seemed to make a lot of sense to everybody at the food service table for our meeting. And so that, that is an area where we can save some money as well. So we felt like that was a pretty good decision at the meeting. So we can add that to our, to our list. I don't know what the dollar savings is for that. I think after our meeting today, I think we've, we've helped narrow down what we want for those serving areas so Ed can come back with an estimate for us hopefully very soon and we can get that rolled back into our estimate. We do have an allowance in the estimate right now, so we'll see how that gets adjusted. But I think that, that made a lot of sense and that should help us with, with budget, for sure. Another, I've got a bunch of ideas written down, but we haven't discussed them with Estes, so I don't want to say, I've got this much in savings. We have some ideas, but we don't have those final numbers. So looking forward, we're printing our seventy-five, is it seventy-five percent or fifty percent? Fifty percent construction documents on Friday. Those go directly to Estes. They start doing a really detailed, more detailed estimate, getting pricing from subcontractors, those kinds of things. So we should have a lot better idea of where we stand with design documents because there are some things that we're still carrying a square foot cost on for mechanical electrical plumbing items. So that's the cost reduction ideas portion. The next page was smart choice options. The first section of that, new for board consideration, let's move forward, Danielle, to the storm sheltering section, which should be right after this. This is a document that I put together and sent to Dr. Cox a month ago or so, three weeks ago. You know, we've gotten a lot of questions about other schools having storm shelters. And when I say storm shelter, I mean a FEMA-approved storm shelter. It meets a significant list of requirements. A lot of people have gotten grants for those. Grant money is not available at this point in time. There's just no funding for it. So we've never been tasked with providing a FEMA-rated storm shelter for this building. It's not been in the budget. It's not been in the design. But we wanted you to see what those requirements are, what your building has in it already, just based on the fact that that's just part of the structure of the building, what the next steps are and what it would take to get to that level, just so you know and have that information. Because we have gotten questions, meeting with staff, where do we go for storms? Where do we go for security? Where do we go for protection? Those kinds of things. So in this document, you'll see things that, items that are just naturally built into the project. We can put first aid kits in spaces. We go by the minimum of five square feet per person. We can put fire extinguishers and we're going to meet the flood elevation criteria. No brainers. Super easy to do. Then you get into things that require additional costs but could be easily incorporated. And those are the items that I've got some information on tonight and that's what Estes put together for us here. These items include things like reinforcing walls, reinforcing ceilings or roofs, providing doors and windows that are resistant to high impact, high wind speed, those kinds of things. It doesn't do you any good to have walls that are really strong if you have an opening or a window in that space, obviously. And then automatic shut-off of gas or other hazardous lines. We don't really have any of those going through any of the spaces that we were looking at. If you could go to the next slide, Danielle. There's also items that would require additional design work and cost but could be incorporated. Not really recommending these, but just for full disclosure, this is what those items are. Providing emergency escape openings, providing sanitation facilities within each storm sheltered area so that if somebody was, if you were in there for two, three, four hours, you would have restroom facilities available. And that's for over fifty occupants. Providing atmosphere pressure change, so basically providing ventilation and pressure within the space that you don't have pressure pushing in or pressure blowing walls out, those kinds of things. And then the end, the last, requires significant additional design work and cost, has to do with providing fire separation, support systems based with emergency power, you know, lights, those kinds of things, things that you would need if you were going to be stuck in a building or in a, in a room. There's a lot of additional requirements for structural engineering and inspections and testing and all kinds of things like that. So those are extra things. And this is, this is the kind of stuff that you would pay for with a FEMA grant, you know, a grant process. If you go to the next one. So areas that we've identified in the building that make sense for people to seek shelter in case of a weather event would be the locker rooms on both ends of the gym. These have the precast concrete cap on them because that's what our bleachers are sitting on above. They've got masonry walls all the way around them. So those are naturally hardened just because of the nature of what they're built with. Okay? You can see I've also designated the capacity of those areas for that five square feet per person. So you can see, and I can't read that from here.
Hundred and forty-four persons.
Is it three hundred and forty-four people?
Three hundred and forty-four.
Okay, three hundred and forty-four. We'll go with that. Go to the next plane, please, Danielle. All right, within the learning studios, we have the toilet rooms. We have a boys' and girls' toilet room on each side. And these are highlighted in red. The media lab and the practice rooms. These are all rooms that already have masonry walls because these are on the first floor. They also have concrete and metal deck on top of them. So these naturally are already spaces that you would might, you would seek shelter in. And I believe the cast capacity in here is two hundred and something?
Two fifty.
Okay. Go to the next one. The second floor of the gymnasium wing, there's really no spaces there that would merit taking shelter in. And go to the next one. And then we have the second floor, the learning studios. We have the same toilet rooms, media labs, and practice rooms, but we don't have that concrete cap on those rooms. So you would, you could, if you wanted to, add a concrete, a concrete roof or lid to those spaces. What we're asking you to consider, listed on your smart choice options, would be to provide the, the grout and the reinforcement in the masonry walls for just the first floor spaces in the learning studio and the locker room areas. So we already have masonry there. Some of those walls are already grouted solid just for sound considerations, but providing additional reinforcement. So the additional cost for that comes to about fifty-three thousand dollars. That's something that could easily be incorporated into the project through notes and some detailings. And that would provide a capacity of over about six hundred, roughly six hundred people. The next level is to provide heavy-duty doors, doors and windows, and really, there's no windows, so it'd be doors and hardware. What this is, is super heavy-duty, thick doors and hardware that can resist the high wind and the impact. You know, that'd be the same strength as the walls so that when that door is closed and latched, nothing's coming through, just like nothing's coming through the walls. So that's something that we see as you could do it now, or that's something that you could retrofit later to put those doors in. It would still be cost associated with that because it's not easy to take outdoors, put a new doors, reinforce them all in. But that's something that you could do if you felt like that was a priority. So for item number one, adding the, the reinforcement and grout, that's something you would have to do in phase one if you were going to do it. The doors and hardware is something you could do later if you wanted to. But we wanted you to have the option to talk about these things instead of just assuming one way or the other. A storm shelter is not required by code, so this is not something that you have to do. Some states are starting to adopt requirements to do that, but nothing's been, nothing's saying that you need to now.
Are you looking for feedback on that now?
I would love feedback on that.
Probably a decision sooner than later.
If you're not comfortable making that decision tonight, we could still move forward with the design of the building. If you were interested in doing concrete caps on second floor, things, those are all things that would be part of our structural bid package, which is an earlier bid package. I would need great, your response to that. But as far as reinforcing the walls or doing the doors and hardware, we can wait one more, probably one more board meeting to make that decision if you wanted to discuss it further.
I would think that the closer you get to the inside of the building, the stronger it's going to be to begin with. I mean, like all these areas, if you've got red lines around, or already, there's already one wall that's one that's out and we'll keep going wherever we get to them. So I'm just wondering if it's necessary to spend the fifty thousand dollars for doors. If we've already got the walls and everything that are there, we've got, and that'd be the second stage, basically, of the storm to get into.
Right.
That whether we need anything quite that substantial.
You mean as far as the fourteen heavy-duty doors?
Yeah. Yeah. Because we've already, the storm would already have to get through the outside of the wall and then get to the interior. and then get to the interior wall next, and it'd take a lot of storm to get that deep into the building.
Well, as far as the one item that you have here for fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars, I think, you know, as soon as you said that you can get the capacity up to about six hundred people to be safe in that space, you know, that's, that's a value, I think. That's money well spent. And I just did the math, it's seventy-two dollars per person to keep them safe, I think that's worth it. I would be happy to go ahead with that. You know, maybe the doors, like you've said, wait until phase two and see if that is warranted. And then going back to the cost reduction ideas, Jean, you know, I think that the idea of replacing those metal panels with more fiber cement panels and changing the texture, the look of them, I think that would probably be fine. I don't have any problem with that.
The cement panels, they look like everything, they can look like anything.
You've got to be, what's one of the two options that's most maintenance?
They would be about the same, they both have long warranties. Yeah, I wouldn't really see a difference in that. We typically don't specify anything that has a short warranty period or super-high maintenance.
Like, does the metal fade in the sun, like aluminum siding?
After about thirty or forty years, I mean, it'll get a little chalky. But we're looking at, you know, twenty-five-year warranties for all the finishes. So it's not going to be your typical, "I put up a metal building in my backyard." Sometimes they get chalky and fade. It's a much higher quality or level of finish than that.
Okay. We talked in the previous meeting, too, that maybe the plumbing to that second cafe, possibly, in the future, maybe that's not.
Oh, for the food service, yes, we talked about stubbing out some plumbing.
If we're, if we're looking at more ways to save money, we might.
Yeah, I would certainly favor.
Not go with that.
Any money saved there, putting, bringing in the fifty-some thousand for the fortification there.
I agree with everyone, too. I think we have to do, to provide for six fifty, that's a nice, comfortable number to make sure that everybody can get into for a tornado.
And I think you hit on it with the other surrounding districts that have done the big, full-blown, they got all of that paid for, you know, a substantial amount of that.
Right.
None of them would have done that had they not had that.
Correct.
And I think that's something that in the future, we've started the process to prepare ourselves to be eligible for that.
Right.
And when phase two comes along, that hopefully we're able to.
And certainly, as grant money becomes available, you may be able to get grant money just to do the door, when, you know, the door.
Absolutely, sure.
Exchange, and you know, we can certainly keep our eye on funding.
Yeah.
You know, as well.
That's what I supported, was continuing that path.
Because we had a discussion with the presenter that day, if those were all retrofitted things, and he said.
Yes.
Yeah.
That those were not things that needed to be done, they could be retrofitted, so.
Good.
We'll wait for that cycle to happen again.
So are you ready for a motion on these items?
I also agree with removing the windows at the east elevation of the gymnasium. We're gonna.
Especially if the skylights come in.
The skylights.
Yeah.
You want a motion on all that?
Let's keep going.
If they remove the pant, the window panels, is that just going to be continued wall, or is that going to be a, where that window set, be something, some other design could be put in there than the window?
In the gym, you mean?
We'll take, we'll take a look at the elevation and see if we need to do anything to, to balance that out. We'll take a look at it and bring back some, a revised elevation for you to take a look at.
Yeah, because I would think that if you're going to eliminate the windows, at least, instead of making.
A big flat wall.
The wall look-alike, it'd be a good time to put some.
Other than in phase two, that's going to become potentially part of another building right there.
On the treehouse, on the, I see the design or the rendering, we've got the wood slatted part. Do you know the cost on that offhand?
And there was no cost, I think initially, because it was used so.
We talked about, we talked about using reclaimed, reclaimed wood, and then just having the contractor install it. I don't know that we have a specific line item broken out for that cost at this point. I know we have railings called out, you know, and so it's probably lumped into the railing price.
Okay. Because I know there's, I've heard that that would be an area to save money, too.
Oh, okay.
Just take those wooden slats off.
Well, we'd have to have some kind of a railing anyways, but yeah.
The railing that was there originally, that matches the railing of the staircase.
Right.
Instead of those wood slats.
And I think part of the reason, and Danielle, she's going to do an interiors presentation as well, part of the reason we decided to use those was there was concern with students throwing or dropping or pushing.
And we're going to look at that as a training issue, I believe.
Okay.
There, I'll go one step further than Dr. Cox and say, there's disinterest by a number of us not to have those vertical slats.
That's fine, that's fine.
So a number of us would prefer you just remove them.
We can do that.
And have the original railings.
Okay.
And we'll let the high school and middle school staff deal with disciplinary issues, because I don't think it's going to be as big of a problem.
Excellent, well, and that's certainly fine, you are hap, please feel free to tell us if there's something you don't like, because we'd be happy to make adjustments.
I see that treehouse area as an opportunity for.
A presenter?
Presenters or a quartet, whether it's.
DJ booth?
Whatever, yeah, so that they could have visual of the.
Right, connection.
Cafeteria below.
Yeah.
And if you have those vertical slats, now you've just taken away everything, I think is great, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I would agree with you. It looks a little cagey the way it is now, you know, and I understand it has that look of the tree, but I, I think that's correct, what you're saying.
But there's more of a, let's remove that than.
Has more purpose.
We like it and keep it, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Can you ballpark me a number?
No.
I know you like to ballpark. A percentage of this total dollar number for the total project, what, what number will come out of that for the early bid package, the early bid stuff? Is it a fourth? Is it?
Scott, do you have a feel for that?
Is it ten percent?
You're wondering how much, what portion of the total dollar of the job will be in the early bid?
Yeah.
I, I know how to.
No.
I didn't bring our.
Sure. I was just curious, you know, if there's X number of dollars we expect that to come back to, and if, you know, by, obviously, earlier than the total bid package, we would have over or under what we expect to spend in that early.
Right, well, I mean, that's, that's one of the other benefits of the early bid package, we will have to portion the job, nail down, so.
I would say it'd be in the.
If you would come to the microphone.
Sorry.
It would be probably in the around two million dollars range, somewhere around there.
Well, remember.
One and a half to two and a half.
We have, how much in the bank now? Nine?
Yeah, it's down to, down below that now.
And the projection was, we would need the additional borrowed funds by Christmas time or between Thanksgiving or Christmas this fall. We would need the additional money in hand, so.
Yeah, I'm wondering if by, when was the early bid package due? April?
Um, looking at, let's see, May?
May eleventh?
Yeah.
We would approve the early bids, so by May eleventh, we would know if we were over or under, or at least a percentage of that. And I wondered, at that point, is it too late to, for some of these alternates or other decisions, to say, okay, we say we were, or is it too risky to say that, that's part of your contingency?
Well, one of the things that Scott and I have been working on is putting together those early bid packages and looking at the project schedule and how that works. And I know we're struggling to get documents ready to go out by this Friday.
Okay.
So we're looking at shifting that a little bit, so May eleventh is probably.
Sure.
Not going to be.
I'm sorry, yeah, basically, there's a couple of things going on, one with some of the changes that have been made. Jean's team has really been pushing hard to get these gymnasium changes made and everything like that, but in order to ensure you get good bids, we need to have good documents.
Yeah.
And so, we may, we may, we're going to move that a week or possibly two. We've been looking at the remainder of the schedule, we don't think that'll create a major impact to the job.
Okay.
So, so we think we, well, we need to nail down those dates.
Sure.
In terms of the packages that we're looking at, the major portion of the site work, the foundation concrete, the structural steel interaction, not the exterior skin, not the roof, not any interior work, but that will be a significant piece.
Yeah. That's kind of what I.
It's a large piece of where the risk is in the project as well.
Sure.
This week, we're going to get some, some more and better mechanical, electrical information. We intend to spend quite a bit of time trying to zero in those portions of the budgets as well, so there'll be quite a bit more activity in the next couple of weeks.
Sure, okay.
But I can, I'd be happy, I'll send Dr. Cox tomorrow a quick email.
Yeah, I was just curious.
About what that piece looks like for you, and then you all have a good idea.
Sure, thank you.
All right.
Anything else?
All right. I have Danielle here to present interior finishes throughout the building, so if you want to do an action item now on what we've talked about as far as costs and some design stuff.
Let's see if we're ready to make a decision on some of these things that are before us, before we move on to the interior designs. You know, me, I'm.
I'm ready to go.
So let's have a motion, so we can keep moving forward with this project in the meeting.
Well, let's try and formulate this.
Okay.
Let me start off with, make a motion to reduce costs by changing all areas of metal panel siding to the fiber cement panels. Terry, that's number three.
For a hundred.
For sixty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. And then number four, remove windows at east elevation of gymnasium for seventy-eight Then we'll add, number one of the smart choice options, provide fortification of media rooms and toilet rooms at first level only of learning area in both locker rooms at gymnasium via fully grouted and reinforced CMU walls for fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars.
Do you want to add the, the second floor space on the cafeteria to reduce that?
Finishing off that cafe space.
I think rolling.
And a reduction in cost, a savings in cost, is to reduce, is to eliminate the cafe on the second floor.
Of the learning studio.
Of the learning studio.
What about the wood slats? If there was a cost.
Okay. And we'll reduce the wood slats on the treehouse.
And change those to.
And change those to.
Standard railing.
Standard railing that we've seen before. Is there anything else?
I like that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Get it done.
So it's, you have all that, Terry? Can you repeat it back?
Probably not.
Do you want me to, you want me to say it again?
I think I've got it.
Just for clarification, I want to make sure we all have it correct.
Okay, so for reductions on page two of five, you're going to accept number three, which is to change all areas of metal paneling siding to fiber cement panels. You're going to remove the windows at the east elevation of the gymnasium. And then, under smart options, you're going to add number one, provide fortification of the media rooms and toilet rooms at the first level only. And then you're going to eliminate the cafe on the second floor of the studio and change the wood slats to standard railings.
In the treehouse.
In the treehouse.
Right, and you skipped the fortification of the locker room walls.
Okay, and that.
That was excluded.
You didn't finish reading number one.
Number one, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I stopped.
Yep.
Abbreviated that part.
Any discussion by the board on the motion that's been made and seconded? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Dyne?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Brisby?
Yes.
Maycomber?
Yes.
Winterring?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Any other motions at this point to be made by the board? Hearing none, we'll move on and have you continue your presentation.
Thank you. Danielle is our interior designer, I think most of you have met her. She brought finish boards, and we have some images and some finish plans for you to take a look at tonight, so we will try places.
So I wanted to just start with a brief recap of what we went over last time I was here about the inspiration for the color palette. A lot of it was based off of healthy food choices, produce, very natural, vibrant colors, but also a lot of research went into what kids this age group want to see in their space and what they respond to. So here's the image of the design board that I believe you guys kept a copy of. I'm going to go to the next page. And you can see, we kind of started to touch on the color palette there, and the bottom-left corner was kind of the pops of color that you're going to be seeing in environmental graphics, the more bold colors that are used sparingly and smartly throughout the project. And then the optimized palette at the top right kind of goes over light reflectance values, so for a good learning environment, you want light to be able to bounce around, you don't want it to be a dark cave, and so that's kind of how we apply this overall palette to the building. So I guess with that, I'll jump into the more specific finishes that I brought with me. You guys all see this okay? So, going through this, these colors here, you see these large pieces are going to be your environmental graphics. So that means at the cafe, we'll have kind of a ceiling piece or something to that effect that kind of defines that space. There'll be, along the fitness trail, they'll be incorporated in the branding for each of the lab spaces, the classroom learning environment, so all of the media are all the same color, or all of the listener are the same color, to kind of help, both in wayfinding, so new students can kind of quickly find where they're going, but also in assigning an identity to each learning environment. So then within these kind of bright colors are the more subdued colors that will actually be your wall colors. If you think about, this will be, it is bigger, but it's not going to define more space in the project. It's going to be more, I believe, we've assigned the flex space as potentially being purple, so there'll be one wall that's a light purple. Right now, I think we're looking at the teal being in the fitness trail and in the design lab, the green going in explore and listen, and then the blue is going to be kind of an accent throughout, as kind of your signature accent color. Blue tends to be timeless, regal, a good classic color. Most people like blue, I mean, not everyone, but most people enjoy blue, so it's kind of a safe choice to use as your main accent throughout the project. And then bringing in a little bit of orange in the cafes to remind you of like bell peppers and carrots and those kinds of things, but also paying homage to your school colors and who you guys are. So then, we work into the neutrals, and so this is going to be your kind of your main flooring throughout the project. It's linoleum, it's a tile product, it's super-easy maintenance. So, day in and day out, you're just going to have to sweep it, dry mop it, if there's a spill, you can wet mop it. Depending on your maintenance regimens and what you guys determine is best for you, you could potentially take a red buffer pad to it, but you're never going to have to strip it, never wax it, and it's made from all natural materials, so you don't have to worry about harsh chemicals being breathed in. So that's the main color, but then providing these options throughout the rest of the space. So, along the fitness trail, some of the stations will be orange, providing some blue flooring to kind of break up a little bit. If everything's all one color, it gets really monotonous and boring. You can see in here, we have different colors of floors, so breaking it up a little bit to define zones. Green is underneath the treehouse to kind of define the shady area, underneath the tree, if you will. Turquoise we're using on the fitness trail as well. This is the sheet product, it's pretty much the same color as this one, but this is for your restroom. So, the nice thing about having a sheet product in restrooms is that tile, sometimes over time, you can start to see the seams, and it can potentially harbor any bacteria. So in a restroom where you're potential for splashing or any kind of that going on, you want a sheet product, and so we're kind of keeping that in mind as we go through. you want a sheet product and so we're kind of keeping that in mind as we go through. And then lastly, we've got the black, which is the actual fitness trail itself. So that is kind of your running track or jogging trail throughout the building. And we've also used it a little bit in the gather to define kind of the performance or speaking location, if you will. Moving on from that, we've got our carpets over here. So your main carpet is gonna be the gray again. What I like about this carpet is that it's got an organic feel, it almost looks a little bit like stone. And it's got different heights of loops in it. So the combination of different yarn colors and different heights are gonna hide wear and tear. It's gonna hide footpaths, a lot of times on carpets you see where kids walk consistently. It gets worn down, so this will help hide that. And also just hide dust, you know, kids drop bits of paper, that kind of thing. If you have a solid carpet, it's very obvious, but with a little bit of texture, until the vacuum can come by, it helps kind of hide that. The blue works again with, you know, kind of your main accent throughout the project. The green is really only in the treehouse. So again, smartly using these pops of colors, 'cause, you know, you want, you want this to last you a while. And then these are different types of walk off carpet. And so what that means is in vestibules, you want to have a super gritty carpet that cleans the bottom of your shoes, so that all that debris is left in the vestibule and doesn't come in and scratch any floors or make a mess for your janitorial staff. The reason we have different colors there is gray is gonna be your main field color, but the fitness trail does go right through one of your vestibules, so we've got to accommodate the station and the track within that. Moving on, this is your flooring potentially for locker spaces, the wet prep rooms, any place that has a shower, wanting to provide a really durable floor that's gonna have, if you feel it, I can, you guys can feel this later, this is yours to keep, but it's got a little bit of grit to it, so we're gonna have slip resistance in those spaces as well. It's a really workforce product, but because of that, you know, it costs more than these guys, so using it just where we need it and not everywhere. These are plastic laminates, so these are gonna be what your storage, your casework, your cabinetry is made out of. Proposing a nice maple color for most of your actual cabinets. And then countertops could be kind of a darker, almost soapstone. And again, providing a texture, a pattern in there that hides any kind of dirt or wear and tear that will happen over time. Then lastly, I've thrown in this guy as an accent piece at the information commons circulation desk, at the main reception desk and potentially at the nurses' desk, just so that we don't have a large area of something wanting to break it up again and not be monotonous. Moving on over here, this is solid surface. And so that is kind of a manmade stone that is super durable, no maintenance. And that'll go on places like window sills, benches, if we have some built-in benches, that'll be the benchtop, because it's really more durable than a plastic laminate countertop would be and it will last much longer. Then we get into this gray right here is what we're considering for lockers, shower stalls, toilet partitions. It is a HDPE plastic, so that's very technical, but again, that means low maintenance for you guys. That means if someone takes a Sharpie to it, you can wipe it off. If you scratch it, it's like someone takes a key to it, it's solid color throughout, so it doesn't show as much as a paint might. That being said, your maintenance staff could potentially even take some heat to it and kind of smooth out any scratches that do occur. So it's a really awesome product that I think you guys will like. And then moving to the bottom corner here are your resilient accessories. So that's your wall base, your transitions from carpet to tile, just kind of the little things that no one notices, but paying attention to what colors those are so that they blend into the floor that they're next to. That way you don't have like a red stripe next to a green, you know, just paying attention to the details of the project. Then you see these fabrics here. The furthest one is acoustical baffle material. And so it being a nice light gray ties into everything else. Additionally, they'll be hanging really high up, these baffles, so you don't really want to provide a bright white, because you're not gonna get up there to clean it all the time. So having a light gray is a little more forgiving in between cleaning periods for those highly mounted objects. Then these three are tack board materials. And so we've only provided a couple options, because some of the walls are going to be painted a color and that way the tack board kind of blends into the wall and doesn't become this eyesore in the space. And so explore being green, we'll have the green tack boards, design being teal, we'll have the teal tack boards. And then anywhere else on a typical wall that's gonna be a typical gray color would have the typical gray tack board. The next one over, this is your window shade fabric. So you'll see when you kind of get up close to it that it seems really dense, but it actually has a three percent openness factor, so that allows light to come in in a controlled way, but it still maintains visibility out. So it's really, it's our standard for this type of environment and roller shades. And then lastly, this is an example of cubicle curtains. And so that's in the nurses' office where you have kind of that hospital curtain that hides the cot. And that's just a standard antimicrobial fabric, very neutral, washable, that kind of a thing. So I stare at this stuff all day, every day. If I brushed over anything that you would like to know more about, I would be happy to tell you, 'cause I, at this point, I see it so much, I forget what you guys aren't familiar with.
Remind me where we're putting carpet, the green, the blue and the gray. Is that in the learning studios? Is that in the learning studios?
No, the learning studios are...
Tile?
Tile, yes. So here you can see the lower commons plan. I think the only spaces that we have carpet in here are actually in the administrative suite. So Jean, you wanna go to the next one? Oh, keep going. So then the treehouse, you see the green in the treehouse, that would be this carpet. And that's the only spot in the project that this is used, to kind of define that specialty feature and really highlight that element. The info commons does have blue carpet, but keep in mind that there's gonna be lots of furniture in there. It's gonna be bookshelves row after row, there's gonna be sofas and that kind of thing. So it, you know, it seems like a lot of blue carpet, but in actuality, you're not gonna see a field of blue. You're gonna see pops of blue between things.
Peaceful.
Yes, exactly. Do we want to go back to the 3D images now?
Yeah.
So this is the commons, and I think you've seen a similar review to this before, but what we've added is we've kind of started to paint some of the joists in the rafters brown to mimic wood and tie into the raised wood decking and part of the space. We started to experiment with some color in the area. There is a nice height elevation that runs around the entire commons to provide like a blue stripe that could be environmental graphics, it could be paint, to kind of pull the space together, because it's a very large space. It's also a very tall space, so you wouldn't break up that wall in some way so people don't feel lost within that volume. So that's kind of what we're seeing in this view. Obviously, the treehouse is gonna change a little bit. But any questions about this?
So this is linoleum?
In this area, yes, it's linoleum. So we've provided the gray almost throughout the entire space, but you do see that blue stripe and that kind of curves along the curved portion. And those seats could be blue carpet with wood risers. And it is just a nice way to kind of define that as a feature.
Okay. Are the shade, is it like shades are down, is that this image of the windows up above?
No, I don't know, the windows are just turning gray for some reason in this image.
Okay.
I think, Jan, in...
Thank you.
I think in some of these commons spaces, we do not have the window shades, because it's not a learning environment where people are there for a long period of time. So in order to save some costs, we've eliminated some of the shades in some of those public areas. So...
It just looked really dark and so I didn't know, are you showing us an image of what it looks like with shades?
And what you're looking, these are not fully rendered images, they're rendered, but they're not taken to that next level of photorealistic. So some things don't show up correctly in these.
So I wouldn't mind seeing more warm colors, very cool colors in the commons area, but I know that's a lot to do with the rendering.
Yeah, and I think having the wood look in the ceiling will help warm that up a lot. Do you wanna go to the next comments image? We are talking about providing some school orange at the climbing wall and having that part of the fitness trail come in. And then we were showing those international flags kind of hanging on the wall, how you guys saw in some of the schools that you toured. And I think there's always potential, the furniture showing is dark gray right now, but, you know, we haven't had the discussions about what color furniture is. So, you know, maybe those tables aren't actually white tables, those are just placeholders for now and there is potential to warm it up as we go further.
Can we amend that motion for cost savings to whatever the cost of the climbing wall is? I think we've been around that a few times, right? If that was, if there's a large cost associated with that, that was one of the...
Is that, yeah, is the climbing wall still in there?
It's actually, it's a traversing wall and it's actually really affordable. It's, it's actually, they come in four by eight sheets. It's, and they're just cleats on the wall, it's a four by eight sheet, it's actually really affordable to do.
Okay.
International flags could actually become our sports team, shouldn't they? That's not a cost saving thing.
Anything else?
I like that green carpet, so if you can find it, where else put it?
So this is looking at one area of the gather space and you can kind of see the different lab entrances and how we might start to brand those spaces. And so this is showing explore being green right above the entry. And, you know, there'll probably be text or images or something related. It's not gonna be a flat green, there's gonna be, you know, logos and stuff associated with that that we haven't fully developed yet. We're associating blue with the caves, it's kind of a calm, slightly darker, quiet space. Flex is the purple or violet color. And then camp, kind of playing off the idea of fire and liveliness, is bringing in that pop of orange at that location. Moving further down to the design lab that has the turquoise. And then there's another cave that's blue right there. So that's kind of how we see these bright colors being actually used. You can see it's not a full wall, it's, it's details. Then on the ceiling, you're seeing some, what our lighting designer is calling sky rings. They're fun elements that are also potentially going to be environmental graphics. Maybe they'll have images of clouds or something to that effect on it. But they help kind of define the space, bounce sound around and kind of make it a fun atmosphere for the kids to learn in. And you can also see kind of the stripe of blue that's happening in the gather flooring. And next one?
Well, and you're also showing the glass partition walls. And so I want to ask if those are not glass, if they're some other solid material, isn't that space gonna get real dark real fast with the purples and blues that are in there?
Not necessarily, because that stripe that you're seeing is really only three feet tall, but the ceiling will be all painted white and so that's gonna really bounce light around, especially if we have any indirect light that bounces up towards the ceiling.
With all the blue on the floor too?
I'm not worried about it, but if you guys are, we can visit that.
I want to see the glass partition walls, but with the cost, I know that's something that we're gonna have to wrestle with.
Can get those beds down as we get those.
Keep in mind that any space that is used by kids has to meet certain minimum lighting requirements and so none of these spaces are gonna be dark.
Okay.
But the color of the walls is that very pale shade. It's not the dark.
Purple and blue and green and blue on the ceiling is just a lot of potential to get real dark, I think, if we don't have the glass partitions.
I agree, but when you look through here, it's the pale lavender, it's not the dark lavender in the classroom space.
Right, I think Dan's concerned about the gather.
The gather.
And I think, on the second floor, we've got the clear story windows to bring natural light in.
Right.
On the first floor, we're looking at doing lighting treatment to give the impression of a clear story, so that they seem similar.
Okay.
Without actually having the windows on that level. But we're talking about white or light gray ceilings, lighting that goes, shines both up and down, indirect and direct lighting.
There's plenty of uplighting along, above this, it'll illuminate nicely. This is optimal, of course, but...
Right.
It won't get too dark.
Yeah. And so this is looking back at kind of that central space with listen on the left and media on the right. And kind of doing, we've talked about doing some faux stage lighting at the ceiling there and we've kind of painted that wall black, so kids could put on a skit or a play. Teachers could give a lecture, you could pull the projection screen down and have like an educational movie session. So providing kind of that stage feel without actually providing a performance space. You can see a little bit of the branding happening at these spaces and that blue stripe on the floor. And so if you guys feel that that stripe is too big, that's definitely something we can modify very easily and quickly. But this is the direction we've headed and I guess we would like to know if you like it. Are we headed the right direction?
So that's comments, are they headed in the right direction? Would you like to see them make your course correction? I'm good.
You know, I just, I just wonder about this blue car, this is blue carpet or this is blue linoleum?
No, that's the tile. So we can reduce the amount of their...
No, the tile's fine. I'm just thinking blue carpet and a space, a lot of white lint and stuff that...
Where is that dark blue carpet going?
It's in the media.
In the information commons.
Yeah, 'cause that's gonna show everything.
Yeah, it will show the white paper like you're saying.
Yeah, it'll show, it shows almost more so than light carpet does, dark carpet does.
Yeah.
Threads, lint, dust, everything.
Yeah, it's usually safer to go somewhere in the middle, a mid-tone will hide the most.
What if we just go to the gray?
We could do that, absolutely.
Keep the colors for the walls, let's keep the colors more neutral. I know, I love that green.
I love the green too.
Unless you want to do a stroke.
What do you think?
Add to that cost some of it.
What? Coach, that's a question, yes.
Yes, I'm Nancy Samson, I'm saying, keep those colors. When we went to independence, what did we see? Gold walls everywhere, every single classroom looked exactly the same, the hallway, the whole thing. These kids are gonna be fired up about these colors if anybody walks into the building. So don't be afraid with that.
We're just looking at the carpet, that's really dark.
Right, yeah, but the things up on the top are great. You're gonna have the white walls, you're gonna have these circular things coming down. It's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks Nancy.
Okay, so we can look at swapping that out, this carpet does come in different shades of blue. If you want to stick with blue, we could go to a different shade of blue, if you want to explore.
Later blue might be better.
Something if you think, 'cause even just ripping a piece of paper out of a spiral notebook, there's little flicks going everywhere.
Yeah, and if you're in an information center, you're gonna have a lot of that.
Yep.
Or potentially.
Yep, we can change that.
No, will you in five years?
Probably not. I'm thinking back too long ago.
There'll still be paper wads floating around somewhere, I'm sure.
No. So keep it the way it is.
I like the color.
I'm not concerned.
I want to make sure the glass walls stay, otherwise...
So find a way to, yeah, keep that going.
Can we go back to where you have the blue carpet?
Yeah, do you want to pull up the floor plans, Jean?
There it is.
So, yeah, so right now we're showing some in the administrative offices just as a way to brighten up those spaces without necessarily applying bright colors to the walls. So that's one location. And then the only other location for the blue carpet is in the information commons. And then it actually transitions, there's a security gate that occurs and at that point it transitions to the blue tile.
So where's the gray carpet going then?
That's gonna be, kind of, you see that box around the information commons desk? There's, oh, yeah. Is that the right, there we go. So right in there, in these offices, you wanna go back to the first floor? It's right there, it's in this office. And then it's in the listen and media rooms and the plan spaces. So kind of this whole...
Whole area there, okay.
...chance, yes.
And remember, this is opening in the fall of sixteen, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And aren't we looking at having electronic devices for everyone five through twelve by the fall of sixteen? Wasn't that in a budget proposal at one time?
By twelve.
I know there's been talk, I don't know that, there's nothing concrete ready to go for the fall of sixteen, but there have been conversations headed that direction.
Right.
So the potential for paper gets minimized?
That's true.
It's fine.
I want to ask how long teal... I want to ask how long teal is going to be...
Well, it's always going to be the secondary color. I mean, that's what this palette is based off, is secondary colors. Our research indicates that kids like this color, but keep in mind, these are carpet tiles. So if you do come to hate teal, you can rip them up.
That's what's great, and even about the linoleum, we're not married to this like as if we would be...
If it was tarazzo or something.
It's a tarazzo floor. You have it for...
Like what you're standing on.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's significant.
That was original and it's here forever.
You can replace linoleum a lot of times at the cost of a tarazzo floor.
The maintenance is substantial. Last year, we actually talked about that at the...
Yes, yes.
Did you, go ahead, introduce yourself.
I'm Phoebe Pittman. I teach eighth grade. I love color. If you've been in my classroom, I think you know I have no problem with color. I'm not sure about all of, it's very dark, a lot of it, and I tend to personally like the brighter colors. The blue, I would also be concerned about just how dark it is. I, I like, I'm with Dr. Cox on wanting the glass walls to let in the bright, the bright light, but I'd like to see the whole palette just lifted a little bit to pop a little bit more. And yeah, the teal, I have the same question. Are we going to want that in another year? I mean, I worked in a building fifteen years ago that used teal, and I'm sure they wanted to get rid of it three years after when I, when I worked in it, when it was three years old. So I, I like the inclusion of lots of color. I just wonder if some of it could be brightened up a little bit.
How soon before you need decisions?
What do you think, Jane? Well...
On this step?
I think as far as specific color choices, we've got some time. When it comes to materials, we need to nail that down. But as far as picking Sherwin-Williams number sixty-three forty-three versus Sherwin-Williams number...
I can pick it out ten minutes before you go back.
You know, that's not a big deal. It's not, it's not as big a deal. I think, you know, our goal is to go out to bids beginning of June, you know, if we can know next month. You know, we can, we can bring back some more blue samples. We can bring back some, you know, revised, some revisions to the next meeting.
Lighten it up a little.
Let you, let you take a look at it. And really, like Danielle mentioned, it can be a little bit deceiving when you see a large field of a dark color and a small field of a light color, and that may not be how it's actually going to happen in the project.
I think if you preworked your board and put the darkest color as a small, you probably would have gotten a total different action. But I still am concerned about the navy blue carpet. Just working in the homes that I work with, anybody that has dark carpet, it just, anything.
You see it.
A hang nail. I mean, everything shows up.
We can, I mean, tell me if I'm speaking out of turn, but we can look at carpet selections that have a larger mix of, of color, you know, a greater range within the combination of fibers that are different colors to help kind of mask that or different tone it down. You know, we can bring some options, you can take a look at them.
That sounds good, and, and I think the green and the gray and all those other colors for the vestibules are fine. I think the only thing is that, that blue. And, and I hear what Phoebe's saying, too, about color. You know, if there is, to me, some of these colors just, I love them all. I love color, too, but there's, they just feel a little muddy. I'm just talking about the paint colors. I think you keep all the tiles as they are and the carpets as they are, but just the, the dark paint, the, all the paint colors, except for the lightest, they just seem muddy is the only way I can describe it. If there's just a way to get a pure orange or a pure green teal, does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's the easiest thing to talk about.
Okay.
There you go.
But I think the rest... I think the rest of it is, I wouldn't touch it.
The, the greens, if you go to Sherwin-Williams Ry Grass Green, I think you'll be right on with the right kinds of greens. The materials you've selected as far as the hard surfaces, the maple for the cabinetry, the, the dark that you, for the seals, for the window seals, that's all surface mater, that's the gray, the grays and those type of materials. I'd be excited to see the material that you've chosen for the surrounds and the restrooms and that, because in this building, yes, in this building, they put in the, the black to try, I think, to ward off some of the writing on the walls and things like that. But it also makes for a really dark experience when you're in those rooms. So it'll be nice to have some lighter, lighter options in those enclosed spaces. But, so your materials are great, maybe just tweak your colors a little bit.
Okay, well, next time, we'll bring revised paint colors and options for that blue carpet.
Yeah, nice job.
Thank you.
I agree with you. I think, I like the materials you've used in what areas, just with you to look at some of the lighting up the colors.
Absolutely.
I like the way you lay place the materials.
Yeah, and maybe, well, we have a new orange, too.
Yeah, I've got that up here.
Okay, you've got that.
Sorry, I didn't really cover that, but that will probably be present mainly in the gym and the gym graphics.
Okay, great. Perfect.
Thank you.
So our goal when we come back for the next meeting is to bring some environmental graphics to present to you as well. So environmental, environmental graphics covers a lot of different areas, but looking at branding, wayfinding, the fitness trail, all those things, you know, there's a lot we can do with words and images throughout the building to, you know, give it life. And so when you add that layer on to what we're showing you tonight, I think you'll really see a big difference. So we'll, we'll bring that back next time. So I think that's all I have on my agenda for tonight.
We'll see you again in two weeks?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it'll be two weeks or if it'll be the May, May eleventh. So we'll go back and discuss as a team and try and figure out the best thing, best time to come back.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. The next agenda item, the presentation is scheduled twenty-five to thirty minutes, to my understanding. So I think now would be a good time for a five-minute recess before we move on to the next presentation. Call a meeting back to order and move on to Agenda Item Eight, Consideration of Grade Alike Elementary School Plan. Remember, this is an information and exhibit item only, no action to be taken this evening. We have our elementary principals here for the presentation.
All right, just to introduce myself, I'm Marcia Schwaddi, Marcia Schwaddi de Vore. Principal at...
It's not even Throwback Thursday.
Yeah. Principal at Lincoln.
Sarah Shannon, Principal at Washington Elementary. We are glad to be here tonight to talk to you about the elementary configuration. The element, the elementary leadership team and the secondary leadership team, which is composed of both administration and teachers, have been meeting recently, reexamining our Charleston Community School District mission. And that's really one of the pieces that has kind of prompted our thinking along this. And I'd pull your attention to the highlighted section of our mission, and that is to provide an environment in which students and employees can achieve their maximum potential. And you're going to hear us kind of come back to that over and over tonight as we go through that. We also know that in order to reach our maximum potential for our students and for our staff, that we need to keep and be very strategic about how we use our resources, keeping in mind that student success should always be first and foremost in our, in our thoughts. That means that we have to focus on excellent teaching for all of our students, that we want to personalize the learning and support for our students, and that we need to do that in a cost-effective way, and that sometimes means we need to be creative with our solutions. So to begin this process for looking at our elementary configurations, we wanted to make sure that we work from data, which is the way we ask our teachers to operate. And so some of the research that we have pulled together in regards to configuration, tonight you're going to get a very brief overview. I won't take you through all of the pieces that we've looked at. These are just kind of some summary statements. But basically, it's pretty hard to get conclusive information that one configuration is better than another. It gives us good questions to ask and things to consider in terms of our specific system. Some of the pieces that we looked at indicated that a small grade span configuration, such as a K-two or a K-three building, may increase student and parent's sense of community, stability and comfort level, and then really focused on, on relationships. But we know that there are lots of pieces of research out there that we'll continue to look at.
So first, we want to just take you through currently how our schools are configured. And as you can see, Lincoln's is a shorter list, and that is primarily because they have less fluctuation in the number of classrooms per grade level. If you, you notice that typically it's two sections, kindergarten through fifth grade, three specialty classrooms, and then their Title One teacher for support. And then at Washington, you'll see how it varies quite often throughout the school year, and then that does vary into the next school year, obviously, because all of that would shift then. And that's been a trend at Washington to have that, that change. One thing that has stayed pretty consistent is that two sections, going into two sections at the fourth and fifth grade level, and I believe that started about five or six years ago, when we tried to, you know, for budget reasons there. So we have five special ed teachers in classrooms at Washington, and then we have one and three-quarter Title One. Current reality is that even with this configuration that I just mentioned before, one out of five students currently is served outside of that neighborhood boundary line that we have drawn. And so, you know, you're looking at twenty percent of the students are not attending their neighborhood school. There's lots of factors in that. We have a, what, being the size of town we are, we have a transient population that, you know, some people, the town's large enough, you go to one dis, or one neighborhood and you move to the next. And typically, we try to honor that you might be able to stay at your neighborhood school because we, you know, value the relationships you've built there, but sometimes that creates an imbalance. We also have had a family move in, and they may have a fourth grade student, and our fourth grade is really large, you know, typically at Washington, so we've asked them to maybe go to Lincoln, and then it creates an imbalance in that building because maybe they have a sibling in first grade or second grade. So then, even last year, we had a case where we had a family come in, I think it was, Marcia, was it kindergarten that we were at, kept at kindergarten at Lincoln? We said if anybody new moves into kindergarten, they have to go to Washington. If anybody new moves into fourth grade, they have to go to Lincoln. And sure enough, we had a family that came in with that exact makeup. So one way or another, it created imbalance there, too. We also have a lot more single-family homes that are, you know, housing multiple families due to various reasons, income-based most, most of the time, but that happens as well. And one thing that we want to share a little bit is with the option for preschool now, that could increase potentially the number of students that would be requesting to stay at Washington because they already start there. We do get quite a few students that, through the Shared Visions program, you know, might be in the Lincoln neighborhood, but they request to stay at Washington, and we try to honor that when we can, but we simply wouldn't be able to honor sixty to eighty requests, you know, because there is potential for that. Also, we have parent requests and, you know, other school requests where we cap the class size. I looked back through some of the last four out of five years. We've asked families to transfer from Washington to Lincoln or vice versa. So, and last year, we did have five students, I believe, that did end up transferring from Washington to Lincoln, and that was at the fourth grade level, and they did that. So, you know, we're really looking at the fact that all of this, that transferring option really creates an imbalance. And so we are really hoping, hoping that, especially for kindergartners, you know, we have to wait till the end of the year, if not into August, to really say what school you're going to be able to attend, because we want to try and make those kindergarten numbers as balanced as possible, but still honoring that neighborhood request, and sometimes that's really difficult. So we're here tonight, obviously, because this is at a board decision per school board policy, and so this is our proposed grade alike configuration. We propose that at Washington, we would host the preschool, kindergarten first and second grade, and you can see a much better, you know, as far as the Washington compared to before. It's a nicer balance as far as those students and the number of classrooms at every grade level. We're not bouncing around to three to two to four to two to three. And then at Lincoln, we're proposing the third, fourth and fifth grade there. And currently, that would mean that there would be five sections of third grade and then continue that four sections of fourth and fifth. So we want to kind of show you, again, some more current reality here of numbers. We have a comparison. This is for next year numbers. So when you see fifth grade there, that means next year's fourth graders. Oh, I'm sorry, this year's fourth graders, next year's fifth graders, sorry. And so, you know, if you look at the neighborhood side on the right, that would be what it would be, Washington and Lincoln. And our, our biggest concern, again, this is out of the five, our last six years that we've had this concern, we're going to be looking at a huge imbalance in fourth grade. We'll have, if we follow the trend that we go to four sections, we'll have a thirty-two, thirty-two and a twenty and a twenty. And so there, we're looking at, you know, trying to balance it out and asking for twelve students to transfer at that fourth grade level. And then, for the most part, you'll see third grade is, is pretty balanced. It might be a matter of, you know, four or five students. This would be what the Washington building would look like then. So we're looking at preschool through second grade. The one that we really see the need to respond to or be able to be responsive to is that kindergarten class. Currently, we have ninety-one students enrolled. That really breaks down into our TK classroom, so if you subtract those twelve out, it breaks down into the, the classrooms of nineteen and twenty. You know, still a good size for kindergarten, and, but if you look over on the right-hand side, we would be looking at Lincoln taking the six TK kids out. They would have twenty-four, most likely a single section, so a single section of twenty-four. And, you know, they get, those teachers and students get really isolated as they travel in a single section continually up. And then if you look at Washington, then we look at fifty-five.
As we think about this proposal, we need to think about how, what implications it has for a number of our different programs. If we were to look at implementing this for the fall of 2015, sixteen, in this configuration, there are twenty-two identified special education students and sixty students in grades three through five that are identified. That's a fairly typical pattern. You would tend to see more students identified for special education as they, as they move up, as we start to see some of those challenges that the students might have. So we would propose then that there be three special education classrooms at Washington and five special education programs at Lincoln. Within those programs, we would look to have a behavior specialist at both buildings, and then we would make determinations on, on other programming based on student needs. Title One is another program that we would want to consider. It's the implications. Title One is a federally funded program. The funds are provided to school districts based on the number of low-income families residing in the district. That number's not going to change based upon our grade alike or neighborhood configuration, so the amount of money for the district would stay the same. But we do have a slight discrepancy in the free and reduced lunch rate at, between the two buildings. And so a grade alike configuration would even out some of that discrepancy. Our Title One program is run through a school-wide program, which means that our buildings, both buildings are run through a school-wide program. You have to have a population of free and reduced lunch over forty percent in order to do that. We don't see a grade alike configuration changing that number at all for either building, and so both buildings would remain Title One eligible. As part of Title One, you are required annually to review your Title One plan, and so that would be part of the review process that we would do this spring, and we would examine how we would want to see Title One implemented in a grade alike configuration, should we choose to go this route.
I would just want to add, it could potentially affect the, the sign of designation. Right now, both buildings are designated as school in need of assistance, and that's based on IO assessment. based on Iowa assessment results. And so when you're looking at a K-2 configuration and then a 3-5, our K-2 students don't take the Iowa assessments. But K-2 would be looking at the early literacy implementation law, that Eli law that's out there with all the new assessments that we've been doing. So they would have that component to support them. But it might mean a difference in our building's sign of designation.
If you think about the other services that we provide students, we have a shared art PE and music program. Currently, we have to provide the supplies for each grade level at each building. The teachers in these specialty areas would be able to align their resources. Everything that you would need for fifth grade could be with the fifth graders. Everything you need for the second graders could be with the second graders in one building. Related to that, our band orchestra and choir, this is a, these are programs that begin in fifth grade by having all fifth graders in one location. You have a efficiency in the time that you have with those students and the large group rehearsals that you can have with them. We see, we would see an increased efficiency with our tag program. Currently, our tag teacher serves K-8. If she's working with fourth graders at Lincoln, she also needs to work with fourth graders at Washington. And so while each group may get a 30-minute slot, if they're all in one building, they may get a 60-minute slot. Probably minimum implications for our ELL program. This program is based highly on student needs and is individualized. And so that would continue to meet the students' individual needs regardless of what building they're in.
So an additional piece of research that Dr. Cox was able to share with us is some comparisons to other school districts around Iowa. And so the first slide you'll see is, this is a comparison to districts that would be from zero to 100 students, either larger or smaller than Charles City. And out of those 11 districts, nine of them are grade alike, so 82%. And then we'll compare a little bit larger or smaller population. So 48 schools that are either 0 to 400 larger or 0 to 400 smaller than Charles City. Out of those 48, 41 are grade alike with 85%. And so you can see that this is, obviously has been, at one time, a topic of conversation for many districts and, and the majority of them are choosing that grade alike configuration for some of the same reasons that we're looking at that as well.
And I would, I would add in that the seven that are not, that are shown here on the slide, these are places where they have elementaries in multiple communities. So Mid Prairie with an elementary in Kelowna and one in Wellman and one in Washington Township. Clear Creek Amana where there's one in North Liberty, one in Oxford, one in Amana, and a fourth one opening up in Tiffin. Morris Orange City Floyd Valley where Alton and Orange City have elementaries. Vinton Shelsburg, same thing. So it's not that they've, I believe there's one. Fairfield has two in-town, one in an outline community. And Centerville has three in-town for K-2 students, but then at 3-6, they're all together. So the places where you see that they've not gone to grade alike, each community is still retaining an elementary and they need to do that for geographical and political reasons.
You have buildings that are further than a mile apart, right, and the three minutes it takes to travel from Lincoln to Washington. When we start thinking about the positive instructional impacts that this could have for our students, it permits us to have a very, kind of a laser focus in our instructional practices. The primary building, the K-2 building, can focus on those early childhood pieces that are critical. Research out there shows that that K-3 literacy piece is huge for predicting future success in high school. So if we can really focus in there, it allows an intermediate building, that 3-5 building, to focus on the needs of those, that age student as well. It allows us to build consistency among our grade-level team in terms of planning and teaching. We would see an increase in both the formal and informal collaboration time that those teachers would have together. And we know that one of the most powerful pieces that we control at school in order to impact student achievement is a quality teacher in the classroom. And so the things that we do to improve the quality of the teacher in the classroom are very important. We can have a more concentrated focus on school initiatives that are aimed at particular grade levels in terms of work for students and our professional development. We also see that this is going to be a great opportunity for increased co-teaching opportunities, particularly with our special education teachers. If we are able to program so that a specific special education teacher is working with a grade level, we can really see an increase there for our students with special needs being integrated into the classroom with their grade-level peers. Again, I've talked about the fact that those shared resources no longer have to be split between two buildings. And we also see it as an opportunity for increased horizontal planning, but also increased vertical planning, if you're really focused on that grade above or that, that grade below when you're looking at that three stamp. There are other reasons besides the student instruction that this makes sense, our ability to balance class sizes. We also think that by having a grade, what I would call a grade-level cohort, these 100 students are going to travel through the Charles City school system together. You're going to ease some of those transition concerns that, that many of us have when they move from one building to another because they already know their 99 peers. We also think that it will eliminate some of those attendance center questions. If I'm coming to kindergarten, I know that I go to Washington. If I'm moving to town, I know that my fifth graders, or I know that my fourth graders will go to Lincoln. One of the stories that Cara didn't share with you earlier is of a family that moved to town, had conversations with people, talked about what, you know, did their research, what school this neighborhood do we want to live in, bought a home in that school neighborhood, came to register, and that, that particular grade level was capped. And so they were, they came to the alternate elementary. They had a fabulous experience at the alternate elementary and they, and they let us know that. But that was one of their first impressions of the Charles City Community School District. And is that really the image that we want to be putting out there? We also think that it's going to help unify our student population. Despite everything that we might do, there will, there have been, Lincoln's better, Washington's better. You can talk to one person who'll tell you one thing, they'll talk to another person who'll tell you another thing. If we are all Charles City Comets and we travel through our system as a grade-level cohort, I think we'll see some of those things change.
So we have, the topic is always the transition as you move from building to building. And as Marsha mentioned, with that more unified, you'll be traveling, traveling with your cohort. So typically, when you see a dip in academic achievement, you'll see it as buildings are feeding into each other, which is why we already do a ton of transition activities and step-up activities with our fifth graders going into sixth grade because we know they're both Washington and Lincoln are feeding into each other. And we want to have them comfortable as possible. So we feel that we can definitely handle some of these transition questions by having a committee, you know, made up of, of, you know, staff, students, parents, community members, administration, offering, you know, additional tours, special orientations, opportunities for students to obviously go over to the other building, but also for parents and community to be able to tour that as well. Most parents probably are familiar with both buildings, but some probably are not and they maybe don't know all the staff there. So we'll offer those opportunities. And then just looking at how this really is going to reduce, like Marsha said, that competition between the two buildings and increase the potential for some friendships and relationships.
I would all, you know, I would also add that Cara talked about the steps that we currently do to ease that transition for our fifth graders into sixth grade. We have a very established plan. If you, and if you go back and look at our achievement data for our sixth graders over the last three years, we hold steady or increase the percent of students who are proficient moving from fifth to sixth grade in reading. And so I, I think that the steps that we've taken for that transition planning are really paying off. We know that there are going to be other impacts of a move to grade alike. One of the conversation pieces that we've heard from a lot of people is transportation. What will that look like? As I mentioned earlier, we are not two buildings separated by multiple miles. We are a mile apart, three-minute drive time. We currently run shuttles between buildings and in a, in conversation with Mr. Mitchell. Those shuttles will continue to run and can be expanded. We can look at the development of a new shuttle schedule. And we can also explore a staggered start and end time. You know, if we stagger our, our start and end time by 10 minutes, drop-off at one place, a pickup at the other is very doable. We also would encourage parents to remember that we have a pretty, essentially a 30-minute drop-off window in the morning from the time our doors open and our students are coming into the cafeteria until the time school starts. So there, there is that, that window of time for, to drop off your student. One of the other pieces that we've heard from people about potential impacts is on our parent organization. And we certainly think that this would be a, a great conversation piece for our two-parent organizations. They currently operate together for our annual elementary carnival and we could certainly see potential for perhaps a unified elementary PTO that operates pre-K through fourth or fifth grade.
Okay. Because we do value input, obviously, from the board and from community and parents, we have put together, I would consider kind of an aggressive timeline, but also opportunities for us to get feedback, come up with some solutions, and, and continue presenting. So we're looking at having a parent meeting at the high school from 6:30 to 7:30 in the Commons area, and then come back to the board with some more information and, and answer any questions that you'd have tonight or any questions that parents had. And then, you know, potential board action, you know, around that May 11th meeting date. Obviously, that all can fluctuate, but that was just a proposed timeline, knowing that we do want to value some input here. Again, we're just going to take us back to our beginning here. This, this is the why of what we're doing and, and why we see the, the sense of urgency for this to happen, the 2015-16 school year. We are looking at really providing more personalized learning opportunities to enrich students and to provide other supplemental services. And by, we already provide excellent teaching, but by aligning it in a much better way, it's going to increase those opportunities. And obviously, it's, it's cost-effective to do this too. So we'll bring you back to this. Last statement is, we are looking at providing an environment where students and employees, which is great, not very many mission statements have that piece in there, students and employees can achieve their maximum potential. I'll open that up to you.
I had a couple of notes that I'd written down. Isn't part of the variation in the number of classrooms currently, like on a per-grade level, between Washington and Lincoln, also dependent upon the square footage? Is Washington more square feet than Lincoln? You have more room there, so you have the-
More classroom space.
You have more classroom space there, so you have the natural capability of-
Extra section.
Having an extra section there, okay. Another item, I'm not real sure why we're still using the term neighborhood schools in this town. We're down to two. And we used to have seven elementaries in this district. So at, when we had seven, that's when I believe we had neighborhood schools. And we're down to two elementaries. So, and that, that's not necessarily a negative on your part, it's just a statement on my part. Well, we closed Jefferson, we lost two in the tornado. We used to have one in Floyd and one in Caldwell. So we used to have seven elementaries in this school district. And we're down to two. So the, when we say that we have neighborhood schools, I apologize, no offense, I just don't buy that anymore. We have two elementaries. And that's just a personal opinion.
Well, and as you saw, I mean, one out of five students is-
Correct.
Yeah, and it's actually slightly higher, but we went safe with one out of five. You know, isn't in their boundary according to whatever line was originally drawn at one point.
Yeah.
So you're, you know, you're correct.
And then the, my last comment would be that parents do move very frequently in this district, a lot. Because I remember previously when I was on the board, we were told that we had a family with elementary students that every month, they moved. And every month when they moved, they moved to a different, one of our three elementaries at that time. And the administration decided to keep those children in the original elementary building because that was probably the most stable environment that those children had because they saw the same children and the same teachers every day. And that's just one example. I'm sure you have many, but I know that this community moves a lot.
One question that I've got, I guess, and I'm sure, I, I agree with you, your, what you're looking at here, how, you know, grade alike. But another big cost-saving thing with the same thing that we've had with middle school, high school, what would happen if you ever gave, if you thought of putting both grade schools into one building?
You want to build us a new building, Pat?
I need to-
Neither elementary is, neither elementary is currently enough square footage to do that. But certainly, that's a very, a five-section elementary is a very doable piece.
That was reviewed last year.
I don't see too many kindergartners be able to walk these halls.
The kindergarten and preschool should be together, I mean, they should be together yet, preschool and pre-kindergarten, but then once they start. I just, you know, it's just a thought that we're looking at cost savings by putting one campus together for the middle school, high school, and here yet we're trying to maintain two buildings for the grade schools. And we've got a building that we're trying to find something to do with in the community that we can't, maybe count in any real good way yet on getting rid of it.
We look at that and we would have to, different toilets.
I know, there's different-
And, but I mean, to bring, to bring that back up and to rehash that again, when we did look at that before, that was an option. And we did look into that option. Dr. Cox did some look into that option and we decided it wasn't feasible.
If we had a lot of money, maybe.
Right. So to bring that back up as an option.
Otherwise, I'm using both buildings, I like your guys' plan, we can come up with it, but I just twinkle the idea. Nobody ever look at doing it all.
I would, I would agree with you.
Put it just in one building.
Excuse me, I would agree with you, Scott, about the sentiment, community schools, I mean, it's who we, what we call ourselves, Charles City Community Schools. And, and I support that idea rather than the neighborhood schools. I also like the idea of teachers being able to do more teen teaching as a group and, you know, all the thing, good things that can come to teachers, you know, through mentoring new teachers or, you know, if you have a rock star of a teacher that's in one grade level, you know, share those programs all around, you know? Everybody can be better because of that. And, and most importantly, I do like the idea of personalized learning for students when it comes to reading and math and being able to, you know, schedule a building maybe in a block fashion so that students can go for remedial learning, you know, for a math class here or an advanced learning for, for math class, if, if that's what they need. You know, that they go to the class that matches their achievement level rather than their grade level. And, and so, you know, I think that it's long overdue and it's something that, you know, it's, we're ready to do. I'm ready for it.
This is something that couldn't possibly hit home any harder for me. I mean, I live two blocks from- I mean, I live two blocks from Washington, I have a first grader and a nearly three-year-old, and my wife works in Washington building. So, you know, the, the, obviously, the ease of her being in the same building as both of my kids through fifth grade or fourth grade would be excellent, but I also recognize that if there's opportunities here that a lot of things could be, could be improved upon. The transportation issue was the first thing that came to mind for me, you know, how does, you know, my kid get from one building to the other, or if she has to work early, whatever that may be. And I talked about this with my coworker in the office, and we talked about, you know, the shuttle back and forth, and I said, well, you know, he'd have to get on a shuttle, and rather bluntly, he looked at me and said, well, cry me a river, his kid has to get on the bus at 6:55 in the morning, lives on the edge of town, and, you know, we're, many of us impacted by this decision, or talked about our, our kids having to get on the bus for three to five minutes to, to go across town. So I think that the, the shuttles and, and the extra supervision for the mornings are a more than sufficient solution to, to mitigate those concerns. You know, you entered, you mentioned the Washington versus Lincoln mentality. I didn't live here or work here for five days before I was introduced to that in this, in this community by a realtor of all people, you know, when we were looking for a place to buy, and they were, we would go through the neighborhoods, and they'd say, well, this one's in the X, you know, elementary district, you, you, you don't really want to look here, you want to be on this side of the town, and, and, and that's, that's a fact, and that, that mentality is horrible, in my opinion, for one unified school district. So to, to get away from that, this substantially accomplishes that. And, you know, finally, the other thing I've noticed in the last, you know, couple of years is that there are instances that, you know, there, there's not a, necessarily the same programming that goes on it between the two buildings, there are assemblies that happen in one that may or may not happen in the other. I see pictures posted from something that happened in one building, and I ask my first grader how they liked that, whatever, and he doesn't know what I'm talking about. So aligning that, all of the, the grades in the same building provides, you know, fair, uniform, and equitable educational experience for all second graders, all third graders, whatever it may be. So I think it's, it's, it's a fantastic idea.
Do to come.
Yep.
I'll touch on Jason's point of the transportation as well, and bring Mr. Gabel into the picture here, because growing up, we lived about three miles apart, clear on the western edge of the Charles City District. And our parents made sure that we got up in time to have breakfast before we got on the bus at 7:15 or 7:20 to come to town. And we would typically ride the bus that 45 to 55 minutes, every morning coming in and every afternoon going back out. Am I close? Yeah. So, you know, it's all a matter of how we schedule ourselves in our daily lives. So, yeah.
Yeah, just like you, Scott, you had to get on upriver to ride the bus. I live closer to town, I had to get upriver to do that many tours before I could get on the bus, too.
Yep.
So we all had to get up early.
That's right.
Good, thank, thank you, Vince.
I like the opportunity this is going to give students to create that sense of a community and eliminate that unknown when they do transition into middle school. That is what I see as the biggest issue, is when you've got the different schools coming together, and you've got unfamiliar faces. I think that will be a huge benefit to create those long-lasting relationships early on. It'll just be like a group going on a field trip, they'll know each other, they're walking in and onto an unfamiliar place, but they have their classmates with them, they'll be fine. They'll learn together, learn from each other's strengths. It'll be interesting to hear your answers to the parents' feedback. A lot of what I'm hearing is, is just, haven't learned all the information yet, they haven't seen what the potential is. There's always some concern for change, but we'll make sure that we answer all those questions and make as many people as we can happy with the decision that's made.
I have one or two questions. What do you propose would happen in 2016 when we have the fifth grade up at the middle school? Would you be shifting again at all, or?
I think at this time, we would only see that fifth grade moving up to the middle school, and then Lincoln would be a three, four building.
Okay, okay. That sounds good.
So then that shift has already been made in the event that they're not able to move right away, they already have that shift.
Okay, perfect.
And that eases that huge transition of-
Go back closer to the mic, start.
And it eases that, I always forget that, that huge transition of going to a new building, you know, now they're together for that year, so heading into that new building will, will be good for them.
Are you proposing this for this coming school year?
Yes, this fall, correct?
Yes.
Go back a slide, William.
I'm looking forward to coming back.
Your schedule?
What you girls to come back with.
Yeah.
With your, with your inputs that you've put together from visiting with parents and everything else.
You're going to see a lot of us over the next two weeks.
I think you girls are doing, or ladies are doing a wonderful job, and I think, I think that it's going to be real interesting to see what you come back with. Looking forward to it.
And we certainly entertain ideas and items that you feel really, maybe you didn't highlight tonight that you feel that we need to really explain to parents.
Need to explain those to parents or, or community members, so if there's items that you feel like we need to really bring that out to help answer some questions, we'll certainly entertain those, too.
Obviously, the transportation has been a big concern. Parent-teacher conferences has been something else. I have actually personally received more, it's about time type of comments from parents, and I have negative, more positive by three times over in support of this. And I think it is because people don't realize how many students we do have that aren't going to the school closest to their home already. And we forget how many students live up South Maine, and that there's a whole school that's not existent up there that travel our whole three-mile town.
Two miles from one side to the other.
Two miles. And we forget, this is, Charles, it is a mile. If you're driving your student to Washington, more than likely, you're driving from between Washington and Lincoln. It's a matter of taking a right turn or a left turn. And the shuttle, it'll be.
And the ability, they could still walk to school, you know, if they-
Absolutely, they can still walk to Lincoln.
Walk to Lincoln, get on the bus, ride to, yeah, absolutely.
Something different than my, when we first moved to town, I had a student that would walk here and get on a bus to ride to the high school, because this was a central pickup for the high school, for the freshmen, so.
And that potential for the middle school shuttle piece will still be there as well. I mean, there still is happening now, and that's going to happen next year as well. And, you know, Jason, you were sharing as a parent, I'm a parent, obviously, and I was very excited about the, you know, preschool option, because I have a daughter that's four years old, so she'll be attending preschool, and I had the opportunity to have three out of my four children in the same building with me. And so I am, you know, also directly affected that now my oldest son would be moving into the upper elementary building, and so I have two of the children. I think there, there is a very personal and valid, you know, concern for parents that their, their, or their children are together, and I see that very firsthand, too, but I'll, you know, I also see from the educator perspective that these benefits outweigh, you know, pieces like that.
Parents are very concerned about the Reading Buddy program also, so know that that question is out there, too.
You know, we've, we've talked about continuing that, you know, we can obviously transport students there as needed. We've also begun building, you know, that mentoring program beyond just the building walls, but into, you know, our secondary students, so they're coming and mentoring with students as well. So there's, there's still potential, and that still will happen, that's very much, you know, something we want to see happen, too.
Well, I can remember back when, when I was in school, I went to Washington School, but transportation, you talk about transportation problem, but they used to load us, one through six, on a school bus, haul us to Lincoln, feed us dinner, and have us back in 26 minutes.
Wow.
So it can be done.
Wow.
Wow.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions from the public about this? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number nine, consideration of the 2015-16 We have that in our packet that was, been discussed numerous times by Mrs. O'Brien, and was published, of which we had the public hearing earlier this evening. Does anyone need any further discussion or explanation, or are we prepared to move on?
I'll make a motion that we accept it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed school budget for 2015-16 as presented, and to certify the budget. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item 10, consideration of the 2014-15 certified budget amendment.
Motion to approve the 2014-15 certified budget amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the certified budget amendment for the current fiscal year. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Dyte?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item 11, set pay scale for temporary summer workers.
The only comment that was buildings and grounds, Jerry thought this was a sufficient amount of workers, and that he didn't seem to have any problem finding workers to be hired at that rate. He supported that rate.
And we met last Monday and reviewed this with him, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended summer workers hourly rate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to set the pay scale for temporary summer workers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item 12, school calendar for 2015-16. Dr. Cox?
One o'clock Friday, the governor signed the school start date compromise bill, which does state that school may not begin prior to August 23rd. There are no more waivers, there are no exceptions, August 23rd is the earliest any school district can begin. The calendar that is currently out for public comment has a start date of August the 27th. If you will recall, two years ago, we missed four out of five days, excuse me, four out of the five days in the last week of August, we were out of school two hours early because it was so hot and humid, and we really could have gotten out on that Wednesday as well, but with the late start, we stayed in all day. So that's part of the reason that the start date is August 27th. It's much hotter in August than it is in June, and by starting late in the summer, finishing on June 3rd is not problematic, it still creates the same amount of summer vacation as people have had. It gives us an opportunity to respect the governor's wishes and the economic development wishes of the state, to provide families with the opportunity to travel, vacation, and really take advantage of the first three full weeks of August for any of those types of activities, go to the Iowa State Fair, go to Adventureland, go do whatever you'd like to do as a family. Starting on August 24th, then, teachers would begin their in-service training, we would have three days of that. The first-day conferences, if the elementary teachers wish to still hold that, would be on August 26th, but all students in grades K through 12 would begin on August 27th. The calendar does have 174 days of students being present. It gives us a total of 1,021 hours when everything is calculated. The requirement is for 1,080, and the negotiations with the Teachers Association has given tentative approval to switch from the language that was very specific to allow us to adopt a calendar based on hours. So we have 10 days of professional learning and three days of parent-teacher conferences. That is an increase in the time that we have for parent-teacher conferences as far as days goes. It's at the midpoint of each of the trimesters, and a couple of those dates are going to shift just a little bit. The professional learning is important, we have a lot going on. What Kara and Marcia didn't talk about as part of the presentation with the movement to grade alike, is that we have a really impactful program going on right now with the Iowa Core, with some laboratory classrooms, which we didn't hear about tonight due to time constraints, you'll hear about that in an upcoming meeting. And the work that we're doing, we need to continue to expand. And the more that we invest in our staff, in their professional advancement, the more that our students are going to benefit. And as we continue to see the mission up here, that's what we want to do, is provide that environment where students and employees can achieve their maximum potential. We do have two dates in September, the 28th and the 29th, a Monday and a Tuesday, for all-day professional learning. At the high school level, we are moving toward project-based learning in our secondary classes. We have a national trainer who's going to come in on those two dates and work with all of our teachers, and those were the dates in his limited schedule that he was available. You'll notice, the, the public will notice, that the third Wednesday on five of the months is an all-day professional learning, and one of the questions is, well, why do you need that if you have the Wednesday late starts? And they're really designed for two separate purposes. On Wednesdays, when the grade-level teachers collaborate, and at the secondary level, when the groupings get together in their professional learning communities, they're looking at the week-to-week, how are students progressing, and how do we make instructional changes so that we can continue to be strategically nimble when it comes to instruction, just like we're doing with our resources. On the full-day professional learning opportunities, that's where we go deeper into math instruction at the elementary level, literacy instruction, and then project-based learning at the secondary level. So two different purposes, and we really need to invest in both if we are going to bring about the changes that you'd like to see as a school board when it comes to student achievement levels. There are some small changes that are going to take place, we've been accepting feedback from stakeholders about for the past week now at our Facebook page, so go to our district Facebook page, you'll see the calendar, you can look at it and provide comment there. The CYAC, the School Improvement Advisory Committee, is going to look at this calendar again on Wednesday. They provided some input in January, but a lot of things have changed with the legislature and the governor since then. And so the intent of the next two weeks is to hear the feedback from parents, make some small adjustments, and then on April 27th, to come back, we'll have the public hearing on the calendar. You'll get the revised calendar, kind of the final version of it, prior to the 27th, and then we would vote on it at that time. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
One question, I guess, I want to, this is, this is based, we can change this every year, is that correct?
We can change this every year.
So after we get into our new building and get air conditioning, and if we decide we want to start three, four days earlier, we could still be compliant with the government.
Not early.
As long as it's not before August 23rd.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I mean.
We could also say, a year from now, we didn't like instructional hours, we want to go back to 180 days, and we have that option as well. Each year, you have a public hearing, and you inform the public that you're going to have a calendar, you let them know what it's based upon, and there's an opportunity for input, and then you approve it.
Now, how many hours total is this calendar?
This one is 1,121.
And we have additional days figured in there, so if we have a snow day, we wouldn't have to make it up at the end of the year, is that correct?
That's a good question. The number of instructional hours versus the teacher contract is two separate items. So if we have a snow day, we have a couple of full-day professional learning dates in the spring that I've already designated as snow makeup dates. Because although we would be fine on instructional hours, as long as we haven't missed too many days in the first couple of weeks of school due to heat, or, you know, snow, or fog, or ice, or any of those things that pop up during the winter months, as long as we're okay on hours, you're correct, we wouldn't have to have students come back, but teachers would have to make up their contract day. I think it's important that we don't try to just do 1,080, that we try to keep with the spirit of this, which is, of that 1,121 hours, 24 are for parent-teacher conferences, so that's not students being taught. so that's not students being taught, it's hours that you're eligible to count. So really, we have 1,097, which is only 17 hours above the minimum. So if you take six and a half hours off that, and then another snow day, now we're just right at the bare minimum, and there can't be any days of late starts due to anything. So, hours versus the contract, two separate items, and I would treat them, at least the first two, potentially the first three, snow makeup dates, if we had a bad winter, that those would take place during professional learning. But the intent is that if we go to an hour-based calendar, that June 3rd, if that ends up being the last date, is a fixed date, so that people know, here's the start date, here's the end date, and there is no guessing as to how many days beyond that we would go.
Because we would just, the days are either figure-in, or we're using professional learning days to make up those days.
Right. Or, we make some adjustments, and we take the school day from six hours and 30 minutes to six hours and 40 minutes, and start to add up time if we're having a really bad winter, that we've been missing some dates. Maybe the Wednesday late starts in April and May disappear, and we don't have, those are some things that we'll cross as we go through this. So, a lot of ways to tackle what happens if there's a snow day.
So that we really are eliminating the potential to go to school into the middle of June with this type of calendar?
Correct. The intent is, whatever our last date, that that's a fixed date. And we're going to do everything that we can to make sure that between the first and the last date, that we take care of the 1,080 hours. Now, if teachers have to come to make up some professional learning days that we've missed, because we had to use those as instructional days, then that would take them into the following week, but for students, they would be finished at our last date on the calendar.
Excellent.
Comments I had, I read through every comment on Facebook, you know, I read all of that, which I think there was about 34 of them. You know, the things that stand out to me is that, as a society, we demand the best public education for our kids possible, but it dang well better not be in June, is the mentality that we seem to have, you know, in, that I'm seeing. And this thought or mentality that our kids need to spend as absolute few a days in school as possible is crazy, in my opinion. You know, there's certainly no research that I'm aware of that, that shows that that leads to higher academic achievement, so, those arguments I don't buy. You know, the other one, the late starts and the teacher collaboration stuff, it's, again, we demand the best possible teachers that we can have, that money can buy, but they dang well better, you know, improve on their own time, on the weekends, or wherever it is, because they don't, people don't seem to want to buy into this professional learning. And I disagree with that as well, and I use the analogy of many employers, that, you know, if your employer values you as an employee, they're going to invest in you with the appropriate training and educational opportunities to do that on their dime. You know, that's in their best interest, it's in our best interest, as a parent, it's in my best interest, that the teachers are up to snuff on the things that we're trying to implement. Being married to a teacher, I see that there's certainly not enough collaboration time, because nearly every night, it's nine and 10 o'clock at night that she is texting back and forth with her colleagues, she's on the computer doing emails back and forth, so there's so much of that stuff that people don't see going on currently outside of the school walls, that it's obviously necessary. So, those are, you know, two of the overwhelming comments that I noticed on Facebook, that I, you know, might share my opinion on anyways.
I think the individuals that made the comments about, in regards to the additional learning days for our teachers, if they were to stop and think what's happening there, we're educating your teachers so they can better educate your children. We need to keep our children, we need to keep our teachers up to date. As a board, we have asked for big changes. Charles City needs to make big changes in our education, we need to stay ahead, we just need to catch up in a lot of areas, and we can't expect teachers to do that without some support and without some training. It's not any different, like Jason said, than being an employer and training them in a new avenue they're going to. We forget that teachers are employees, they're just not servants of the community.
Well, I think, I think if you sit here and look at each and every one of us that are sitting here tonight, that we know and we do more than our hours of service, because it takes that to become, so you're good at the service you do. I mean, like me, you know, I'm a farmer, I got, I can plant all my crop in seven days, so what are you going to do the rest of the year? You know, go into meetings, learn the new techniques, just like you are Dr. Cox, you are Scott, Jason, I'm sure you're learning new techniques all the time, too, Robin and Roy, you know, so, I think that, you know, that's just part of what's expected of us to get, so we can do the best at our job that we can.
All of that being said, I think that there is some flexibility with some of the day, full-day things that they, we've shown as being, you know, the Wednesday's off, and I think you maybe looked at some, some possible Mondays that are already holidays that could potentially be shifted, I think that's one good compromise.
Right, so in January, the 20th, which is a Wednesday, is the date that was slated for professional learning, to keep it as the third Wednesday of the month, to keep that same flow for families. The 18th is Martin Luther King Day, and I've had several people say, well, couldn't you switch that? So, we certainly can move the 20th to the 18th, and then in February, the same thing, that the third Wednesday could slide over to be the President's Day, so that parents who have those dates off could be at home with their kids, and they don't have to be searching for childcare two days later.
And those, are those some of the comments that you've researched?
Those are some of the things that have surfaced on both Facebook and in staff interactions as well.
So I want to, we do want to encourage the public.
Right. To continue to reach out to us.
Yes.
Continue to provide.
We're hearing, yeah, we're hearing, and some of your ideas are ideas we want to implement, yeah.
Well, and I know I had asked, and I think this is, will be important to the public to understand, too, is the breaks that you have planned into this school year also line up with our university, so if you've got a family that has college students, that you want to have some time together, that lines up, so I'm glad to see that. I've seen all these comments on Facebook, too. I, I can understand, everybody has their traditional ideas of when school should start and end, but I'm not so committed to those dates. You know, I think there's, we need a lot of flexibility here, and I came from my school district that did a modified year-round school, and you don't really want to talk to me about doing that here. So, um, oh boy. We'd have a mutiny for sure. I do support the breaks that you have there, too, for Christmas, for Easter, spring break, whatever you want to call it. You know, I saw where a lot of people were saying, oh, just do away with those breaks, kids don't need them, you know, schools are getting soft, you know, no. You know, I think that teachers, parents, and students deserve a break, a time to refresh and renew, and, and just have some time away from school, so that they can come back and dig in again. And I think that break is refreshing for everybody. Um, let's see here.
Is that break also in the contract? Or no?
No.
No.
The spring break is not in the contract.
No.
So that could potentially be another makeup, snow makeup, if we have so many?
Uh, no. There is a portion about makeup days and spring break, but that's also been a negotiations topic, and so, just no. But I want to point out, I want to rea, I want to reiterate what Lorraine has said. Spring break aligns not only with NIAC next year, but with Iowa, Iowa State, and UNI. So, all four of those institutions have spring break the same week that we are proposing to have our spring break, and for families that have college-age kids in addition to school age here in Charles City, that is a real nice opportunity for some family time.
Yes, absolutely.
But not the Big 12 men's basketball tournament?
No, but you could be in Des Moines, watching the first and second rounds of the NCAA tournament, because that lines up with spring break next year.
I, I fully support all the time you've got in there for professional development, I think that's great. You know, we're at a transition period here, where we're asking a lot of teachers to, especially in the secondary level classes, to go to project-based learning. You know, it's got to feel a little bit like thinking outside of the box for some of them, and so I think all of that time is, is very important and necessary at this point. However, as we move forward and into this, some years down the road, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with this pattern of so many days without students being necessary. I don't know the answer to that question, but I just want to raise that thought. At some point, I would think teachers would become more proficient at their craft with project-based learning, and yet there's always preparation time, so, it's just something I'd like to raise.
This is an information item only, and the CIAC committee will discuss it on Wednesday evening. The district will continue to take public input on our district Facebook page. They also posted on the district Facebook page an email address where people can submit questions or comments, and perhaps.
We've had a couple of people do that.
Yeah. And I'm sure all of us have taken comments as well through contacts and Facebook messages and whatever, so.
So are we looking at approval next meeting?
Potentially, the, we could have a recommendation from the administration in two weeks, or it might be at the May meeting. We'll wait and see.
Well, the hearing, which is part of Agenda Item 15, is, it'll be set for April, excuse me, April 27th, so.
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing, which will be the final form of the calendar.
Okay.
So really, input that's going to be provided by.
Between now and then.
Community members, needs to be this week, you know, next Monday probably at the latest, because we'll be working on the very final version to send out to you by April 23rd, so that you've got that prior to the board meeting.
So, yeah, in two weeks. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, termination of contracts.
So, the termination notices have been hand-delivered to each of the affected employees, and the list has been provided to President Deit, and Director May Cumber is going to read each of the motions, one by one, and they'll each be voted upon by roll call vote.
Yeah, I'm just going to explain also, the motions, as we've been instructed by the attorney, need to be specific. And so, each motion has been typed up to be this, as specific as it needs to be, and that's why I've just asked Robin to read each motion, and then the rest of you may take turns at seconding the motions, to keep things moving along in a timely manner this evening. So that's my explanation.
I should point out that none of the affected employees requested a private hearing with the board, either.
No.
Good.
I move that the recommendation of the superintendent be accepted, and that the contract of Christie E. Wald be terminated effective at the end of the current school year, for the reasons that were set forth in the superintendent's notice of recommendation to terminate the contract of Christie E. Wald. I further move that the additional recommendation of the supervisor be accepted, and that Christie E. Wald be issued a continuing contract as a regular full-time employee with a 1.0 FTE contract for the 2015-2016 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on the motion for termination of Christie E. Wald. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I move that the recommendation of the superintendent be accepted, and that the contract of Julie Hollab be terminated effective at the end of the current school year, for the reasons that were set forth in the superintendent's notice and recommendations to terminate the contract of Julie Hollab. I further move that the additional recommendations of the superintendent be accepted, and that Julie Hollab be issued a continuing contract as a regular full-time employee with a 1.0 FTE contract for the 2015-2016 school year.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the motion for Julie.
Hollab.
Hollab. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I move that the recommendation of the superintendent be accepted, and that the contract of Eric Johanni-Meyer be terminated, effective at the end of the current school year, for the reasons that were set forth in the superintendent's notice and recommendations to terminate the contract of Eric Johanni-Meyer. I further move that the record, that the additional recommendations of the superintendent be accepted, and that Eric Johanni-Meyer be issued a continuing contract as a regular full-time teacher with a 1.0 FTE contract for the 2015-2016 school year.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the termination of Eric Johanni-Meyers, as read. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I move that the recommendation of the superintendent be accepted, and that the contract of Ryan Rawmiller be terminated effective at the end of the current school year, for the reasons that were set forth in the superintendent's notice and recommendations to terminate the contract of Ryan Rawmiller. I further move that the additional recommendations of the superintendent to be accepted, that Ryan Rawmiller be issued a continuing contract as a regular full-time employee with a 1.0 FTE contract for the 2015-2016 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the motion for Ryan Rawmiller. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I move that the recommendation of the superintendent be accepted, and that the employment of Carleen Ritterath as a ninth-grade basketball girls, ninth-grade girls' basketball coach be renewed for the 2015-2016 school year, for the reasons that were set forth in the superintendent's notice and recommendations regarding non-renewal of contract of Carleen Ritterath.
I want to, before you do, I want to ask, I heard be renewed rather than not be renewed.
Not be renewed, I'm, excuse me, let me reread that one, please. I move that the recommendation of the superintendent be accepted, that the employee of Carleen Ritterath as a ninth-grade girls' basketball coach not be renewed for the 2015-2016 school year, for the reasons that were set forth in the superintendent's notice and recommendations regarding non-renewal of contract of Carleen Ritterath.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded not to renew the contract of Carleen Ritterath. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I move that the recommendations of the superintendent be accepted, and that the contract of Teresa Sargent as a bus driver not be renewed for the 2015-2016 school year, for the reasons that were set forth in the superintendent's notice and recommendations regarding non-renewal of contract.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded not to renew the contract of Teresa Sargent as a bus driver. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I move that the recommendations of the superintendent be accepted, and that the contract of Keisha Trenton as department chairperson be terminated, terminated, effective at the end of the current school year, for the reasons that were set forth in the superintendent's notice and the recommendations to terminate the contract, Keisha Trenton.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded not to renew the contract of Keisha Trenton as department chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero.
I move that the recommendations of the superintendent be accepted, and that the contract of Davis Voas be terminated effective at the end of the current school year, for the reasons that were set forth in the superintendent's notice and recommendations to terminate the contract of David Voas. I further move that the additional recommendations of superintendent be accepted, and that David Voas be issued a continuing contract as a regular full-time employee with a 1.0 FTE contract for the 2015-2016 school year.
I'll second that one.
Been moved and seconded to approve the motion affecting David Voas. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Maycumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I move that the recommendation of the superintendent be accepted, and that the coaches' extracurricular contract of David M. Williams as middle-school wrestling coach be terminated, effective at the end of the current school year, for the reasons that were set forth in the superintendent's notice and recommendations to terminate the contract of David M. Williams.
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded to terminate the extra coaching contract of David Williams at the end of the current year. Any discussion? Roll-call vote, please.
Maycumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I move that the recommendations of the superintendent be accepted, and that the contract of Naomi Yadoth be terminated, effective at the end of the current school year, for the reasons that were set forth in the superintendent's notice and recommendations to terminate the contract of Naomi Yadoth. And I further move that the additional recommendations of the superintendent be accepted, and that Naomi Yadoth be issued a continuing contract as a regular full-time employee with a 1.0 FTE contract, which includes 10 extended contract days.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on the motion affecting Naomi Yadoth contract. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll-call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Maycumber?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. That takes care of the pages I had in my packet, does that take care of the pages you had?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So that takes care of that agenda item. Number 14, Financial Report for March 2015. Mrs. O'Brien?
Just a couple of comments. We did receive our earnest money back from Stewart Realty on April 6th, so that's all taken care of. Also, in our flex spending account, you'll notice our balance is up a little bit, 60 percent.
A little?
Quite a bit. But in, at the end of this year, there is a carryover provision that is new to our plan, that the board approves. So, in the past, employees would have to spend it in the, in the year in which they put it away. This year, there is a carryover provision, so it makes sense. So that was it.
Motion to approve the financial report for March 2015 as presented.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the financial report for March 2015 as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll-call vote, please.
Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Maycumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 15 is the consideration of the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as amended or revised.
Revised, I'm sorry.
Roll-call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Frisbee?
Yes.
Maycumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 16, Important Upcoming Dates.
Wednesday, April 22nd, which is not too far away, is the Academy of Board Learning Experiences at New Hampton. If you have not yet registered, you can do so on your own, or contact Lisa here at Central Office, and we'll get you registered.
What time is that on?
Uh, should be at like 5:30.
It's a meal.
Meal and then a meeting.
It's Earth Day.
It's Earth Day.
Next regular meeting, the 27th. I'm going to point out that the Excellence in Education banquet is May 2nd, that's a Saturday. And that will be at the Elks. We would love to see a good turnout from the board. And then, May 11th is the regular meeting following that.
If memory serves, there's something going on at the high school this Friday?
Something going on at the high school this Friday.
No, it's-
Oh. Back-to-school project, yeah, during the day.
What time is that? Yeah, I know, I just need a refresher on the time.
You need to show up at 7:30.
7:30?
Yeah.
On the second day, I can sleep in, I got to be there early?
No, it's tomorrow.
So 7:45 Friday morning? In the Career Center? Okay, I'll be there.
Tell you here in just a second.
Any other important upcoming dates? I declare the meeting adjourned at 9:33.